Yeah, I don't, is your mic on?
Hello.
Hi, there we go.
Oh, it is, there it is.
Good evening, my phone says it is 5:00 PM. So at this time, I'd like to call our January 2025 Happy New Year Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If you will, can we roll the call, please?
Dana Kemp.
Here.
Nonnet Reese.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
David Wisdom. Joseph A. Strope. Bill Chancellor.
Here.
Jennifer Stevens.
Here.
Oscar Mosley.
Here.
Walker Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to give a brief overview of the process of this public meeting for the Auburn City Planning Commission. The commission will be presented with agenda items by the city staff. A representative for the agenda item will then have the opportunity to make comments and/or answer specific questions from the commission. I will then open a public hearing as appropriate, not all agenda items require a public hearing. And this will be for the opportunity for you to address the commission about a certain agenda item. We want everyone to be heard. And we ask that you keep your time to five minutes and your comments relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I'll close the public hearing. The representative and staff will then have the opportunity at that time to answer any and all questions that have come up during a public hearing. The commission will vote based on the state, local, and city comprehensive plan 2030 and the general good of the community. In addition, I'd like to summarize the role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. Alabama statute municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. The commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations previously adopted by this commission. When you come to speak upfront, please do not forget to sign in and also state your name and address for the record. As you know, the Planning Commission is an advisory board to the city council, except in cases of subdivision decisions. All other decisions we made by the city council after consideration of this body. The dates of those can be shared once the agenda item is voted upon. Thank you. Well, let's get started. At this time, I would like to open this for citizens communication. This is your time to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda item. So if you'd like to speak now about anything that is not going to be discussed later, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Adam Ficken. My wife Olivia, my two children Dylan and Noah.
Oh, wait a second, wait a second, I'm sorry.
Zero six zero Fieldview Drive.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. So what, so you want to speak about the rezoning?
Cox Road that has been removed from the agenda. I spoke with Connor earlier and he said at the beginning of the meeting was the time to do this.
Yeah, so, alright, so we haven't removed it from the agenda, it needs to be postponed. I think we kind of talked about it, are y'all comfortable with just kind of, how do y'all want to handle that?
So.
Open until we postpone it.
Right, and the postponement has been requested by the applicant. And so therefore I hate if he or she believes they postponed it and then we open a public hearing and let people speak on the agenda item and them not here to rebut it because they thought it was next month. So that's why I don't want to open a public hearing with a postponement request.
Okay, so, alright, so if we're not going to open the public hearing, are y'all comfortable hearing this now? Even though it's still technically on the agenda, I guess?
There are two others in the area that would like to share comments as well.
I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, yeah, so I guess I would say it's up to the commission, just kind of how y'all want to handle it. Because it's still technically on the agenda, like I said, that's y'all's purview, just kind of about how you want to handle the public hearing or not.
I think it's citizens communication. This particular agenda item will be postponed. And I do feel like you should be able to have time to speak if, since you're speaking generally in this particular moment of time for tonight's meeting. Instead of us opening a public hearing, that should be appropriate when the item comes back after postponement.
Okay, I understood what you said, but I'm still not clear, are you asking me to sit down?
I'm great with you to speak tonight.
Oh, yeah, 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 hold on, yeah, yeah, I think the commission needs to work this out, so I'm sorry, Mr. Ficken. So what, what did, what's the opinion of the rest of y'all, because I guess y'all need to decide.
Let him speak tonight.
Let him speak.
He's here.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
No, no problem at all. Happy to get in the leadoff spot here. And I know that many of these people here do have legitimate voices and concerns that they want to address tonight, so I will be very brief. Okay. Twenty-eight, twenty-six Cox Road, item number nine on tonight's agenda. This is the second time that it has been removed very late. And I have made plans and canceled plans and I thought I'm just going to come down here tonight, make sure our voices are heard. Just so you know, this is proposed to be rezoned as a backdoor approach to build a 7-Eleven gas station directly across the street from Buc-Ee's on Cox Road. If you have not already, this packet on December 12th, item number CU-2024-046 outlines the plan that has been provided by Blackfin Investments representing 7-Eleven. Twenty-sixty Fieldview Drive is the property that adjoins this one in question here on number nine, directly to the west. It is our backyard. I'm very concerned about rezoning this property from CDD, which currently is a residential space that houses an immigrant family who's here working on a visa. It is our backyard. Rezoning this to Interstate Development District opens the floodgate for a lot of negative things. I don't think it's appropriate to have diesel trucks pumps that would service eighteen-wheelers, six plus of them according to the plan, in our backyard that's approximately 150 feet from our back door. I have sent you an email earlier today with some images with some overlays from Google Earth that show you directly where our children's play area is and the proximity to our house, which the plan presented on December 12th conveniently left out. It's hard for me to understand why a 7-Eleven mini truck stop is needed in this area when there are three additional gas stations within a mile and a half of Buc-Ee's. Not to mention that Buc-Ee's is the largest gas station in central Alabama with 120 pumps. I don't know why we need ten more. But if a mini truck stop is needed, and you think that it is, when you go to consider this decision, please know that there are two parcels vacant, not adjoining homes on the south side of I-85 that could be purchased. And there's ten plus acres adjacent to Buc-Ee's that is flat and well-suited for a mini truck stop. So we have a lot of safety concerns. There is a school bus stop at Fieldview and Cox Road where a number of the local area students, my children included, get on and off that bus every day. So I don't think having eighteen-wheelers coming in and out of a situation where children are present is a good thing. So I thank you for what you do, I know your job's not easy. I asked you to consider this. Please know that we will be back when this agenda item does come forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizens Communication. Yes, ma'am, are you here to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda?
Same topic.
Oh, same topic. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Have you signed in?
I did, just a minute.
You can do it after you speak if you don't mind, but it's right behind you.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lula Whigam Marable. Whigam Marable, W-H-I-G-H-A-M-m-a-r-a-b-l-e. I live at 2762 Cox Road. Auburn 36832. It seems like this keeps coming back over and over again. For the last five or eight years, we have been dealing with increased concerns, primarily about the safety of those that live in proximity to the commercial development. That's one issue. And combined with that is the increase in traffic that we all know has come and it will continue to increase as we add more commercial property. I can remember when I first moved forty years ago, that was just a little trail and very few cars came through. Now, I can't hardly get out of my driveway. Now personally, I have concerns. I have no caution light near my home. I have no turning lane into my home. And there is no traffic light. So Fieldview and Cox Road where the school bus stops is right at the corner of my property. And I'm fearful all the time, not just for the children, but primarily for the children in the school bus situation with all the traffic barreling down on you. But I'm also concerned about my own personal safety. When I'm driving down Cox Road coming to my home, I put my signal light on far, far in advance, hoping that the person behind me will see it. And nine times out of ten, the person is right on my car when I turn on Fieldview because I have no other exit other than the exit off of Fieldview. I have no turning lane into my yard. So that is a concern. But I'm also concerned about the increased amount of not just mobile traffic, but also foot traffic. Because if you have a 7-Eleven in your backyard, you can have some unforeseen concerns or serious concerns. So those are some of the concerns that I have personally. The heavy traffic, the unforeseen possible safety issues, as well as my own personal safety and the safety of the children that have to get on and off that school bus right in front of my door, almost. So those are my concerns.
Thank you so much. Citizens Communication?
Yes.
Same item?
Yes.
Okay.
Appreciate hearing us tonight.
Absolutely.
My name is Dr. Steve Hammerick, I live at 2071 Fieldview Drive. I'm a little further back than those two, they're on the front line. But I'm well aware of how difficult their situation is. I won't keep you very long, I know you got other things to do. Have you ever in your house had the smoke detector or the house alarm go off? Probably you have. It's loud, it's real loud, it's meant to be loud, it's meant to help you. It's meant to make sure if you are asleep, you wake up. You can't sleep through it, you know you can't. A smoke detector is eighty-five decibels. That's going to get you out of that sleep. Same thing for the house alarm if somebody tries to break in. An idling big rig is a hundred decibels, louder than that. And I want to put that over right next to his backyard. And I have looked at different ways cities handle it. Typically with the noise pollution, there is a study done to make sure that it's not too close to residential areas. It's typically about fifteen to sixteen hundred feet they recommend for a barrier. I cannot imagine having that kind of noise that close. I've never had that problem. I went out today, I went out and measured the typical decibels in my yard, it was about twenty-eight decibels. You know, smooth, no problem. Occasional car comes by, it goes up to about forty. Fifty-five is the usual maximum. So to imagine you got twice that up there coming down your way all hours, nobody wants that. The truckers themselves, I've looked at trucker forums, they say that we wouldn't want that next to our place either. So I just think it's a bad choice and a bad position, it doesn't need to be there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please sign in. Anyone else on citizens communication? At this time, I will close citizens communication. And we will move to old business.
Alright. Alright, so I imagine these next three items are going to be the thing that, going to be the things that the bulk of the people in the crowd are here to discuss. So there are, so I just kind of want to outline kind of how some things are going to go. So there are public hearings, which each item. There are three items, but there are four things to vote on. So for the rezoning, there'll be, there'll need to be a vote. For the rezoning to the PDD, there'll need to be two votes because there's a waiver associated with that one on a buffer that's included. And then there is the conditional uses associated with that as well. So there are three separate public hearings. How we handle public hearings? Public hearings are not Q and As. So do not come to the podium and ask questions and pause for a response. We take all questions during the public hearing. We like to get through them, then we answer the questions that pertain to the Planning Commission making a decision tonight. And so if you stop for a Q and A, we will not answer your question. So please say what is ever on your mind just concerning the items. And like I said, we will respond and answer questions that will help the Planning Commission make a decision tonight. So it's not an active Q and A, it's very hard to follow, very hard for people who are watching and also kind of elongates the entire process. So just make the most of your time when you speak tonight and just understand that it will not be treated as a Q and A. And so then with I guess the items, so there's the rezoning to CDD, which is the first item. There's the rezoning to the PDD. And then like I said with that, there's a waiver for the buffer yard on the east side. I'll get to that when I want to go to that item. And then there's the conditional use that is the final item associated with this. So three items, four things to vote on. Like I said, public hearing with each item, public hearings are not Q and As. Alright, so I'll kind of go back and forth just kind of with y'all. Do I have any questions at the outset before maybe before I get rolling or?
There's not a separate hearing on the waiver, that's.
No.
There is not. Correct, correct. No questions, though. Alright, so to get started, so rezoning Donahue Cross and CDD. The recommendation is to city council for rezoning of approximately thirteen point seven four acres from rural to Comprehensive Development District. General location southeast corner of North Donahue Drive and West Farmville Road intersection. Next slide, please. Alright, alright, yeah, so this property is currently zoned rural. Requested rezoned CDD. If you want to go to the next slide with the future land use plan. So even though the future land use here says medium intensity mixed use, this property, I guess what is proposed is a singular commercial use, not mixed. But really when you see these medium intensity mixed use, it's really kind of opening up the avenue for commercial at these hard intersections. And so it's long been the city's position that preserving these hard intersections for like, for major thoroughfares like Farmville and North Donahue for the existence of commercial to eventually serve as commercial nodes for surrounding neighborhoods. And so normally the city does not, I guess kind of since my tenure kind of being here, there's been a lot of apprehension about rezoning to CDD. And I guess that that is something that we do mention in the staff report, is that the support for rezoning this property to CDD is coupled with the support of applying the PED overlay associated with that. The PDD does provide some protections and restrictions on the number of the uses within CDD that we normally would recommend against. So if there were no PDD overlay associated with this, staff would not recommend in favor for the CDD. I want to be very clear about that. I know the previous submission with this was LDD and there's a different zoning. As an aside, I really hate acronyms and I'm very sorry that I have to keep using them. But essentially, CDD is the more intense zone, much more permissive, allows single-family housing, allows all different types of things. A lot of those things are by right, but it's really the kind of, like it says, Comprehensive Development District that kind of opens up and gives a lot, has a much bigger toolbox for developers and property owners who have that zoning district. And the past submission was LDD, which is a much more, much more watered-down version that has a much more tighter and I think a much, I'd say concise uses in it, much, much better for neighborhood shopping center, et cetera. Like I said, staff support for CDD is coupled with the PDD overlay being applied because it reduces and restricts the uses in CDD outright. And would take away a lot of those by right options to the developer. And like I said, just kind of the city's health position, it's kind of been a focus of the city just kind of adding these commercial nodes in some of these areas, especially in the northwest quadrant of town, just kind of in areas where we have a lot of rooftops, where we don't have a lot of commercial. And then Farmville and Donahue have really support that. And like I said, even though this isn't a mixed-use project, it's mixed-use really does look at adding commercial adds a lot of these hard corners in these thoroughfares. So that's the only thing I really wanted to mention on this rezoning. And it's just that it's coupled with our support for the PDD, like I said, which would restrict a lot of the uses that I think normally make us have a little apprehension about rezoning to CDD outright.
Okay, in addition to uses, does the PDD overlay restrict anything else? Outside of that, just the uses in CDD?
Yep, the uses. Yeah, 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 and so it would make something, conditional uses, that would restrict things entirely. I think one of the major concerns with rezoning to CDD, especially in areas where we want commercial, is in CDD, single-family housing is a by right action. And it's one of the things that we get, I guess like for a lot of people, you know, they look at our zoning map, wonder how single-family housing gets places, it's because it was CDD, they could build it by right. One of the easiest things to kind of cash flow on or sooner, that you can realize the profit sooner, is single-family housing instead of commercial. And so that's how you end up getting CDD, that's how you end up getting single-family houses in places where you would think, I think this makes more sense if it was commercial, so.
Yes, and I do see the traffic study is required as a condition.
Yes, and so I guess we can kind of get to that, kind of when we get to the PDD. Because I think it's tied a lot more to the PDD, I would say, kind of the layout of kind of what they're proposing, and also the conditional uses associated with it as well. So I can kind of go into the traffic study on the next item.
Okay.
So this is just a rezoning to basically open up the density of this area since from rural to, you know, wherever the max density is in CDD.
Yeah.
What we're talking about for this first item.
Kind of, so I would say so on the, great question. So procedural question here. So PDD's are not allowed in rural. And so to apply for a PDD, you need the, you need to rezone to a zoning district that does allow for a PDD to be implemented. And so the reason that they're requesting the rural designation be rezoned to CDD to then rezone to PDD, it's a procedural thing.
First step to get there.
Yep, yep.
Because otherwise you can't have the.
They can not, would not be allowed, would be dead on arrival.
Okay.
And then the one question that I had is that the mixed intensity, medium intensity mixed use is per the current future land use plan, correct?
Correct, there were no changes to this intersection in our future land use recommendations.
Even in the update?
Yep, yeah, yeah, even in the update, this is what it was going to be. Like I said, it is a, it has been a stated initiative of the city that we would like to preserve our hard thoroughfare intersections for commercial. Whether they be mixed use, I think that'd be great, but where we can get to get commercial, I think that is absolutely a must-have. And that's something that we have been supporting and kind of pushing for.
Let me ask you a question on North Donahue in Farmville. This is probably for staff or should I wait? Should I wait?
Is your question more for staffer, for the applicant?
Staff.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can answer it.
Oh, you can answer. Well, I want to know, North Donahue is classified. Uh, well, I wanna know, North Donahue is classified as what type of road and what type of road is Farmville classified as?
Well, yeah, I guess that's, that's...
So that's staff.
Yeah.
They're both, they're both arterials.
Both arterials, that's what I thought. Are they, are they corridors to the city?
Well, technically, uh, anything classified as a collector arterial is considered a corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so I guess kinda the implication of that for everybody in the crowd, there would be aesthetic, uh, there would be aesthetic requirements applied to the building, um, that are associated with something existing on a corridor.
Certain, certain cladding.
Yes, yeah, certain cladding materials, et cetera, have to be used, uh, to satisfy aesthetic, uh, standards for the city on these different corridors. So that's the, that's the relevance of that.
Right, okay.
Anything, any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Justice, so I understand, we've talked about this, the reason this isn't being presented as LDD, part of it is, is this, this medium intensity because that does not fall under the definition of limited development district, is that correct?
Yes, and so, so I guess if you wanna go, I think in, there's a duality in, I guess, like what intensity means. Intensity on one hand means density, and then kinda on the other side also the use and the scale and scope of it. And so medium intensity here, like I said, kinda would be that hard corner commercial, like shopping center kinda deal, strip mall, et cetera, that, that kinda fits, kind of a neighborhood, neighborhood shopping center would be kinda the medium intensity from the use standpoint. From a density standpoint, I think CDD would also kinda match that with, you know, nine and a half doling units kinda being the max that you can have in CDD. So I mean, looking from anywhere from like six to nine, but I think from an intensity standpoint, this is much more talking about the intensity of the use and commercial. I guess kind of a high intensity would be something of an industrial scale or something kinda in like our downtown or something like, uh, Tiger Town Development. That would be a much higher intensity, um, from a scale and use side. But this is the medium intensity kinda related to, uh, neighborhood shopping center.
And, and the property across the street, which is a, a vet, I, I believe, is CDD right now?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
And there's two statements in this part of the request by staff that the MDP, which is part of the Plan Development District, which is stating, it's so hard for me to separate because they're all sort of tied in here together.
Certainly.
So it's a, can be beneficial for surrounding existing future residential developments and medicines, groceries and household goods. So when we get to the PDD and we get to the conditional use, there's gonna be a lot of questions from me about what should be conditional use and what should not be allowed under that.
Certainly, certainly.
And then, and then there's another statement about, um, and I have a question for you about this, uh, the next paragraph, how we're applying the Plan Development District overlay that is requested based on a CD may alleviate some of the concerns of the station property owners. My question is, under this request, has the applicant reached out, had any communication with residents? Because as I under, no, as I understand it, and I'm reading the zoning ordinance, it's understood that there is a, uh, there's be compromise, which means both sides have to be in, involved. And so as I look at this and the density of what's being proposed in the PDD, you know, has, is there any compromise? Have you, are you aware of any communication?
I am now, I guess that'd be a better question for the applicant when we get to the PDD.
Again, I wanted to ask you from, from staff standpoint, since I know you have communication with the applicants of these different things, so, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else, commissioners, before we open the public hearing?
Uh-uh.
Okay. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the rezoning from rural to CDD. If you would like to speak on this agenda item.
We had a discussion earlier. I'm Jim Green, fifteen eighty North Camden Court. I'm right at the corner of that development. Um, to me, it's almost impossible to speak on one without speaking on all of them because number one leads the number two to number two to number three that lets them build the strip mall or whatever the process. So I don't know how to just say, don't, don't do the zoning or don't do this, and then not talk about the whole at one time. I don't, I don't, help me here, can I just give it to you?
Can you pause the time real quick? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, yeah, so I'll say, uh, what kinda makes sense on this one? Um, so if anyone was gonna, so just sort of, I apologize for time that, that we're not into your, into your actual time, uh, but if anybody wanted to talk about the distance of potential uses and kinda in proximity of kinda what's been proposed, I would say have that wait until the PDD, um, because this, the rezoning is not, doesn't talk about the outline or the layout of what's proposed. The rezoning is strictly talking about the zoning. Uh, and so I guess like there are uses that would, would be within the zoning that you would be free to talk about, but if you wanna talk about the proximity or the distance or the closeness, um, of proposed uses on the layout that you have seen, I would say wait until the other public hearings for that.
No, actually, it's more that if we don't say something on number one, do you vote for number one to be, go to CDD?
So in this particular instance, this rezoning has a caveat that says it's only moving forward if part two is approved by us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I sit down and wait till part two?
Yeah. So, so I guess it's kinda as a...
Cause I do the overall anyway, so.
The, the PDD, in my opinion, is where all avenues are open for conversation.
Yeah.
So that, cause it seemed to me if we voted for it, then we're already gonna be, you know, fighting that part of it, then we're discussing it.
Two of them are connected.
Okay.
Right, they, this is...
I will return.
This one doesn't happen without number two.
All right.
All right.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, well, go ahead and move, move forward with this, commissioners, if you have questions for the applicant. Oh, I'm so sorry. You wanna speak on this agenda item?
I, I, I'm not certain I under, I'm not certain I understand. I do wanna make a comment about this...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, please come forward to the...
I don't know if it's appropriate enough.
Why shouldn't you come?
All good.
There's, there's two other options for you, so you can come back.
Yeah, I saw him coming in.
Okay, I missed him.
Hello.
Hi. Your name and address, please.
I'm Nancy Gallagher. I live at seventeen oh eight Crescent Boulevard. And, um, my husband and I, Dr. Sean Gallagher, I'm here to ask that you turned on the request by the developer to develop a strip mall, um, next to our neighborhood. The residents came together a few years ago to oppose a slimmer request by the same developer. We greatly appreciated the fact that the council turned down that request for the reasons that you all know about. We would note that shortly after the previous opposition, eight ugly billboards were constructed along Donahue, decreasing the beauty of the area and our property values. This was once really a beautiful stretch of road entering into Auburn, and it would be nice if these billboards could be removed, but that's really not why I'm here to talk with you. It's we're concerned about the current request, um, that would decrease our property values and bring in more congestion when we have a high school coming in down the road, we have two elementary schools right there, and we feel that this type of development could be done maybe appropriately, but the current developer, in what he did throwing it back in our face rather than working with us, was totally inappropriate. And I think that his methods are, to me, very questionable. I'm off script, but... We care about our neighborhood. We really hate what has happened on North Donahue Road there, um, with those billboards and that nothing has been done to stop that, and that was really just a slap in the face to us and all of you for retaliation for what happened last time a couple of years ago. And there's been no effort to work with us as a community to make sure that things are done in an appropriate manner. You know, we thank you for all the things that you're doing that have been wonderful. You know, the new community center that's gonna be built up in Morris Mill, I don't think that would be stood for in that location, and we don't wanna stand for it in our location. We don't. And we know that you're here to help and support us, and we thank you for all that you've done and you continue to do, but we care about our property values, and those billboards that are up along that are a slap in the face to us and a decrease to our property values. And we care about Auburn, and we care about every little thing that happens. And there's two elementary schools right there. The new one that was built down from the fire station, which we thank you for, and the old one that's right down the road. And there's all these new billboards, what are they advertising? Liquor stores. They're all the properties that this man owns. He has gotten the people that rent from him to advertise there. It's a slap in our face, and we don't feel that our property values are being respected and valued and defended. This man is being allowed to do what he wants without... I don't even know. But we care about our neighborhood and we oppose the development unless he's willing to work with us and make sure that there's a quality that is put in there that's similar to what's going on in Morris Mill. They would not stand for it, and we don't wanna stand for it either. We don't wanna become the blight, the north side blight of Auburn. And that's what that road has become, it's a blight. All those, that used to be the most beautiful entrance into Auburn. It was wooded, it was beautiful. We know we can't stop development. There's lots of wonderful homes and homeowners in that area, and we wanna protect our home values, and we wanna protect our children and our elderly, and I don't feel that that is being done by this gentleman. He's not working with us. He has never worked with us, and I just hope you oppose it like you did a couple of years ago. You stopped it, and I hope more people will speak on it.
Soon it counts.
Because we need to stand up, because we can't just let development happen that's uncontrolled and not respectful of the investment each of us has in this community. And so I ask that you vote this down until this gentleman and his group is willing to work with the community and put in things that are high value.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
What I will say, at, at this moment, because we have opened a public hearing, our purview is not about who's doing it. Billboards are not allowed in the city of Auburn, it's not under our purview to talk about that. So if this makes sense from a planning standpoint, is how we are viewing this. So please know that, that billboards, we can't do anything about, and who's doing it, we can do nothing about.
Cause they're in the county.
Right, there's retaliation, but that is not in the goodwill of Auburn, our city, and the reason why we vote for each of you and have voted for you to represent us. And so we need to make sure that this corridor is respected also because it has been disrespected. And it is, affects our property values, and we will be here a long time, and we want that you to be our representatives.
And that is why this is a recommendation to city council. And once all of these go through tonight, we will share what date that would be vote, would be shared with city council on a public opinion, what date that happens, so.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hearing on this agenda item is still open.
My speed?
Yes, please.
On the issue? Hello, my, my name is Chris Wildbacher. Uh, I live on Piedmont Drive, one seven four nine Piedmont Drive. Uh, my wife and we, I came, we came here from California in twenty twenty, and we landed in Nashville, we rented a car, we drove two thousand forty-five miles, we drove to nine cities, ten universities, our daughter was accepted to all the universities, but we picked Auburn. The reason we picked Auburn is cause it's a nice little town, and it's supposed to have this theme, the nicest little town on the plains or whatever.
Loveliest village.
And I, I associate with a couple of professors here, and they just don't, they're seeing things, it's just not that anymore. And I, I, when I come from California, I came from Little Ear, but I saw the slash and burn mentality of empire builders that wanna build their city up and bring in more tax money to the detriment of the people. And you, you look at the town now, driving around from twenty twenty when I came here to now, and at rush hour, it's gridlocked. I saw on, uh, university, at Anna, there, the cars would be blocked, blocked up on the University of Maine Thoroughfare, they didn't have a left-hand turn. Finally you put that in, but it doesn't look like the infrastructure's going in ahead of time before these developments are coming in. And I, I'm just saying from my point of view, it's, it's, what I see, like the, the lady was just saying on Donahue, it's a completely different thing now, coming down that, that stretch there, going into town, there's a lot more traffic, cars are whizzing by, you have a school going in, you have a school there, you have a fire station, you have another school there, and it's just, I don't think it can support it without, uh, actually making that a, a four-lane road, two lanes going each way. But anyways, I, I'm not for it, and I'm sure a lot of the other people here too, cause it's just changing the complexion of the nicest little town on the plains. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in.
Hi, my name is Sterling Sullivan. I live at seventeen forty-eight Yarbro Farms, but my business is at sixteen ninety-eight North Donahue, which is Auburn Oaks Animal Clinic, the clinic across the street from the property being considered. So we are zoned commercial, and when we built that, we, when we built our clinic, my husband and I built the clinic, it was built with respect to the area and that surrounds it and respecting the neighbors and valuing the neighbors around there and adding to the beauty of Auburn, so we could serve Auburn and make it a beautiful place. We have three point eight acres, um, most of it is undeveloped, and we, you know, intend to keep it that way for a good bit of time, heavily treed, and it's beautiful, and across the street is, um, different, let's just say that. Um, so we would like to maintain the beauty of North Auburn, we can't do anything about the trees that have been destroyed. Um, so it is heartbreaking to see it all, and we were, when we built, we wanted to add to the beauty of North Auburn and add to the quality of life out there, and I hope that you will take that into consideration as far as what is built across the street from there. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Oh, yes, there's two of y'all.
Hi, Jennifer Jackson, um, seventeen thirty-six Post Oak Port. Um, I back up to Mrs. James Road. Um, I, I really wanna speak on the other one, but I wanna, I wanna point out something about this picture. It makes it look like there's a lot of space. These, it, there, it needs measurements. Um, the space behind my house, the little triangular bit, is tiny, it's a little spit of land. I think there's even a, um, graveyard there. Uh, what, what? It is, it is so small, the little outside the city limits, little lines, I, I don't know how you're gonna build something there and have parking. Like, there is not enough space. It looks like it's large, it is not large. Um, I have, I, I opposed it last time, I would hope. What I'm hearing is that it's a done deal kind of for the CDD, that's what I'm kinda getting the sense, I don't know if that's correct or not, um, but I don't trust at this point that we are going to be protect, protected with the PDD overlay. My confidence in the planning for the city has waned greatly over the last few years. I've lived in Auburn since nineteen eighty-eight. It's changed a lot. Some of the things were great, absolutely fantastic, and other things are so heartbreakingly disappointing. Um, I understand that this is going to be a big corridor, I understand there's kind of another ring road, I've been doing some reading, I know that there's big plans, but what, what is not being shown on this picture is how really small that is. That, that's a little T junction, there's a lot of wrecks there, it's little, it's, they're small roads, there's not a lot of room, and, and for the traffic study, good luck with that, because it's, there's not a lot of room to get out of Stone Point and then at that traffic light. It's just not that big. So I would please, before you open up all of this, drive it yourself, go out there, hang out, and go and see it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in.
All right, thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Seth Humphrey. I live at sixteen seventy-three Stone Point Drive. If you reference the map, that last streak heading north on Donahue, uh, that's the last streak before the traffic light, uh, my house is the second one on the left. This is what I look at every day. It's not, wasn't when I moved there, uh, I moved to a rural area, which I believe is what it's zoned now, and that was the intent... I moved to a rural area, which I believe is what it's zoned now, and that was the intent, to be in a rural area. I have two young children. The neighbors next to me have two young children and neighbors next to them have three children. They're always in the front yard playing. This change in designation is not a benefit to my family and I would appreciate denying this request. I'm a staunch... I can't speak more against this chain of applications here. And if the city truly is wanting to designate corners for commercial, it's already there. There's a gas station there at that corner that's serving a commercial use as well as very close proximity, large shopping centers, even a new General Dollar or whatever it is across, right around the corner. So the need has been met, if there ever was a need there. So I reject that as an argument. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Please sign in.
Thank you guys, thank you. Emily Antoniak, 1679 Poplar Ridge Drive. I'm speaking from a teacher's point of view. I've been in Auburn for about 25 years now. My husband and I chose to stay here and raise kids. I've been a teacher for 13 years here and I greatly value the educational system and all of the planning that goes into all of our schools. And frankly speaking, right off the map is the brand-new Woodland Pines, K through 2. Not one other elementary school backs up to a strip, that doesn't have any commercial zoning anywhere around elementary schools. They are nestled within neighborhoods so that our youngest generations have woods to play in. They have woods to see. I hope that you guys make... I hope that you guys make the decision to continue that legacy for North Auburn's kids too. They're not going anywhere. We're just adding more schools, which is wonderful. I think it would be detrimental to put a strip mall or even potential future strip malls and restaurants and parking and right in the newest school in Auburn. Thank you.
My name is Paula Davis. My address is 2074 Felicity Lane, Auburn. I do understand that you're not here to talk about billboards, you're not here to talk about personal interactions, so I hope that my comments today will reflect that I am not entering this personally. I hope you'll listen to me not personally, but just my arguments and I hope you'll look at the applicant based on what they've applied for and what they've done in the past. I also want to comment on, I understand the idea of having commercial developments at corridors like this. I agree that's important. I think it kind of dovetails with what the previous resident just mentioned that it's right next to school, it's right next to homes and that doesn't happen. So I know that's going to come on later, but most of my comments do not have to do with that. So I spoke with a good number of my neighbors who wanted to attend tonight but did not want to speak and they weren't sure how to show their representation. Probably their attendance tonight is helpful, but I told them I would give them an opportunity to stand. So if you are in attendance tonight, not wanting to speak, but you wanted to show your opposition, feel free to stand at this time. Okay, thank you. All right, so other neighbors, I'm sure later we'll talk about the scale and proximity, but to further emphasize the concern we have with this development request, we do not believe the developer will be acting in good faith. We, particularly when it's in this location. And so I know that not all of you were on the commission last time, quite a few weren't, but the request before was equally inappropriate, but in 2018, we as residents of Donahue Ridge believed we had worked out a compromise with the developer. But our city council determined that his second request was inappropriate and denied that. And so when that happened, he responded by placing that double billboard at the entrance of our subdivision despite our pleas to reconsider. We had not fought, we had not opposed it. We were willing to work with him, but he still put it there. And so I did email you a copy of my previous communication with him where he claims the billboards were not retaliation, but the actions there and insinuations spoke otherwise. So I know that's a bit personal, but coming back to this, if he's willing to do that, we cannot believe that he will act in good faith with any further development at this property. The development of this property needs to come with the strictest zoning requirements. The CDD is not that and things that are possible under our city code. The City of Auburn zoning ordinance, Article 1, Section 102.11 states, "The purpose of this ordinance is the promotion of the health, safety, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Auburn by protecting landowners from adverse impacts of adjoining developments." The city has an opportunity tonight to show that these actions here will not be tolerated and this is inappropriate. We cannot just let him, sorry, we cannot just let this developer have the opportunity to do whatever he wants in this area because it will not be done in good faith. And so we respectfully ask that you honor that intention of the city zoning ordinance by creating something that would be more restrictive than even the CDD and the PDD on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Sign in.
Hello, my name is James Fisher. I live in Camden Ridge at 1672 Crescent Boulevard. And I think that many of the speakers here have articulated our position very well, hopefully adequately, to impress upon the members here that this is an extremely important issue for those of us who live in Camden Ridge and in other neighborhoods. It seems that Auburn or our area may have its own Henry Potter and that the disdain for this individual has increased and morphed into almost a classic individual who appears to be against his fellow citizens. We know that the billboards that had been placed on Donahue are very unsightly, as has been explained by another member here. What it has done to the neighborhood has really been to the detriment of ourselves and anyone who is maybe visiting or coming down the lane. Just wanted to express that the applicant, although he is an individual and his methods and motives are not to be addressed or within the purview or jurisdiction of all of you. I think it may have some reflection upon whether he would be an individual acting in good faith, attempting to hammer out or find a resolution that would be agreeable to all of the parties. So for that and the fact that it would become unsightly, some would argue unnecessary, would change the flavor of the neighborhood, for lack of a better word, that I would request that this body address the concerns of myself and others here who have taken their time to be present and vote down not only the possibility of being a PDD or also an LDD. My fear is, once the inertia has begun, it may be a matter that we'll be unable to stop it and it will just roll over all of us to where so often we feel there's nothing we can do. So I do ask that you address this forthrightly, taking into account those and many others unable to attend and vote down this measure.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Mike Smith. I live at 2003 Mohican Drive, Auburn, Alabama, in the Preserve neighborhood, just for your reference. I haven't been a resident of Auburn very long. I spent 20 years in military service traveling all around the country. I've lived in a lot of different areas and our family chose Auburn because of that loveliest village on the plain type mentality. We heard great things about it. We moved here cold, kind of cold turkey from Hawaii. Besides the weather nowadays, we love it, right? I will say that I live in the Preserve, which is just west along Farmville Road. I've lived in a lot of locations where I've commuted by bicycle to my work or to my place of residence, a lot. I still do this today. I have to make sure my life insurance is up to date pretty regularly, but I understand that there are locations where commercial development is inevitable. It's going to happen as we grow. I think what makes some places that I live different from others is how we grow and the sustainability in which we grow and that synergy between developers and residents. I don't know the developer that we have a lot of opinions about. I don't know that. I trust that the residents that live here have that honest thing. But if I can tell you really quickly, some of my greatest memories of not just the places I've lived, but it's the things I've done in those places. I have two kids, 16 and 13. I know Woodland Pines Elementary is down where it says low-density residential, somewhere in that location on the map there. But some of my greatest memories are walking my kids to school. They're also walking to a, maybe a commercial district of neighborhoods that I've lived in on military installations where we could go after school to get a milkshake. So I understand commercial developments there, but I don't know the plans, but Farmville Road is a very tight road. Woodland Pines has no way for kids to ride a bicycle or to walk with their parents to school. If traffic is a concern about some of these places and what this medium-intensity mixed used area would bring, is there a consideration and is part of the consideration and the traffic study, how can we sustainably grow and decrease our rate of traffic at this intersection? May not be possible, but a bike lane would help, sidewalks would help, and maybe that's going to work and I'm just catching up to speed here, but that's something that I think is worth transparency to the population and to the residents that live in this area. So I just wanted to put that there. I didn't really have a lot of, like, well-articulated notes. I think I echo what a lot of the residents say, living on Farmville, the billboards did go up when I moved here. I thought it was odd. I didn't pay a lot of attention to it coming from larger cities. But I just ask that if there is this approval of a CDD and a PDD, I'm not sure what those exactly mean, but that there is some type of transparency and some thought to how we can make, you know, this north side of Auburn have the same effects of people living in the city of Auburn that can walk their kids to elementary schools and have these same type of memories with their kids. Because right now, I think the way forward, we're not talking about those type of things that we should have or even green spaces where these families that live in these neighborhoods that are developed and we can just look there, there's no green space in any of these neighborhoods. So where do kids go outside to play? Maybe we should not blame that on our kids all the time, but also kind of look at how we're developing this area. I know I kind of rambled on there for a few minutes, my apologies, but just wanted to talk about bicycle lanes, sidewalks, sustainability, sustainable growth. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello, I'm Katie Murrah and I live at 1703 Crescent. And I didn't really come intending to speak, but everybody has made so many good points and I think the last speaker made a really good point about green space. I have a third-grade daughter that is currently at Yarborough and she attended Woodland Pines last year and we couldn't walk to school and there aren't sidewalks and we live certainly within walking distance of both schools. And my husband, we moved from Charlottesville, Virginia, and he would bike there, but he is scared to death here and he can't get on Donahue. And yes, the billboards are extremely unsightly and they advertise alcohol in front of our tiny children between two elementary schools. And I know we were talking about the CDD and the PDD and we looked up some of the possible uses. And I know you mentioned some very wholesome things that could be there with the PDD, which would be wonderful. You mentioned ice cream shops, the vet clinic is lovely and beautiful. There's so many things, but also some things that could be allowed are things like pawn shops. Correct me if I'm wrong, I looked it up and checked, but you know, auto accessory stores where people can hang out in the parking lot, halfway houses, also some things like all other uses. And it's concerning too to think about some of the things that are advertised. You know, you think about, you know, some of the other properties by the same developer, you know, Love Stuff could open a second location in between two elementary schools and we could have things like, you know, the auto and the pawn shop, perhaps a vape shop or a check cashing place. And so it is concerning and I thought the last speaker made a good point. I'm also an educator and an Auburn business owner and have been for five years. And so I, it does mean a lot to me to live right here and to be a part of the Auburn community in many ways and have a young daughter that's growing up, but it's concerning to think that not only would we have, we wouldn't have sidewalks and we would have to see the billboards advertising all the things, but that PDD could include a lot of unsavory rather than wholesome things in between our two schools where we spend a lot of time. So I would also ask you to please vote it down because if the CDD is voted down, the PDD will also be voted down and all these things that are allowable under the PDD couldn't happen to us and around our children. But thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
You're going to want to come back when we talk about, potentially when we talk about the uses.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Yes.
Nancy Gallagher, 1708 Crescent Boulevard. Can I do that?
No, 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 you'll have to wait till the next public hearing.
Okay. But it's about this conversation.
No, 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 yeah, no, no. So you already spoke in this public hearing, so you can speak in the other two public hearings, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I did not know that rule. Anyone else want to speak on this agenda item? I'm going to count to 10, make sure. Okay.
I would like to just speak.
No, 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 no. You can speak at the next one. You can be the first person to speak in the next public hearing.
I'm going to close this public hearing. Commissioners, applicant, if there have been questions that you need to ask with applicant or staff. Or if you're... Reminder, we are considering rule to CDD, but with the condition for the next agenda item, if the PDD does not go forward, neither does CDD.
I'd like to ask applicant a question. It might be more appropriate for the PDD, but I think it applies.
Okay.
I want to ask my same question to the applicant. So has the applicant approached, attempted to discuss, work out anything with the residents who will be affected by this development?
Not directly, no. I think that a lot of the input from the previous public hearing from six years ago was incorporated into the revised layout of the new plan. And so some of those inputs were incorporated in the revised plan that was put forward.
So when you say not directly, the answer is no?
Yeah.
For this one, okay. Just want to clarify.
Anything else for the applicant while he's here? Commissioners?
So what other developments does, you know, your client have?
That's not in our purview to discuss.
Okay. Disregard.
I do want to ask a question since I'm looking at this CDD thing under the engineering on the traffic study. If this is approved, that's when the traffic study happens, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And maybe this goes to staff. I don't know where this goes. Sidewalks.
Yeah, let's talk, yeah, so I guess once y'all are done with...
It's hard to go forward with anything, really.
Yeah, 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 so I would say kind of once the applicant's done, we can kind of answer some things in the public hearing that were mentioned.
Answer it here or wait till the PDD?
Well, we don't have a preliminary view of what the options are.
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of things to address some of the questions. In regards to North Donahue needing to be four-lane, you know, it's currently in the capital improvement, in the city's budget, the first phase of Donahue widening from the bridge to East University is currently in design and is currently budgeted to be constructed. The rest of the improvements from the bridge to the intersection are in the capital improvement plan as well to be funded. So I don't know if the residents...
Yeah, I mean, I I think a couple of things to address some of the questions. Um in regards to um North Donahue needing to be four lane. You know, it's currently in the capital improvement pro- in the in the city's budget. Uh the first phase of Donahue widening from the bridge to East University is currently in design and is currently budgeted to be constructed. The rest of the improvements from the bridge to the intersection are in the capital improvement plan as well to be funded. Um so um I don't know if the residents know this or not, but uh North Donahue is proposed to be five lane section with bike lanes with a five foot sidewalk on one side and a multi-use path on the other. So a lot of the stuff that they're talking about in regards to pedestrian connectivity and all that stuff, the city's gonna be providing out there and is and is part of the capital improvement proj- uh plan over the next five to six years. In regards to our project, any new commercial project on an arterial road is required to provide um uh sidewalks in a right of way along our road frontages. So whether we're there before, um whether our grocery store is constructed before or if it's constructed after those improvements is whether or not we're putting in those sidewalks or the city's putting in those sidewalks um from that side. Um uh so the ability to bike to work or to walk your kid to work or whatever will be more appropriate. You'll have sidewalks of budding all the way up to uh Woodland Pines. Um the adjacent neighborhood of Woodland Pines and Woodward Oaks actually is has sidewalks and multi-use path that is connects to the school from that particular neighborhood that's currently uh under construction. Uh the the other question came up about uses and and being restrictive and and wanting something more restrictive. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that can be more restrictive than a P D D zoning on a piece of property. It's basically a contract zoning between the applicant and the city that basically says, this is what we agreed to do and this is what we we have to do. If we do something different, that means we have to come back and change that contract with the city, which makes us go right back before this process, going back before planning commission and city council to get any changes reapproved. So there's there's really um you know, there's there's no more restrictive uh use. In regards to uses, a lot of the uses that was mentioned in there are none of the uses that we're requesting to be pre-approved for. Uh as part of the P D D zoning, no uses are allowed. Um every use is conditional. So we're before you guys asking for these specific uses to be approved. If we have a use outside of that, whether it's permitted or not, we would have to come back and go through the same process, planning commission, city council to get that use approved. So this is the most restrictive use. This is the most restrictive uses. Um the same uses that we are requesting are the same uses that were requested next to Wood- on the other side of Woodland Pines at at uh the back of Woodward Oaks where we in that P D D. Um where there's a two and a half acre um commercial lot at the corner of Farmville and um and there. So it's the same uses as as there that that we're requesting here. Uh so i- it's it's no different. Um but be happy to answer any questions. Those are the most. I can't speak on some of this other stuff um in regards to billboards and other things. It's other pieces of property, other ownership groups and um stuff I've never been involved in anyway, so I I can't really address that with with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Yes, Justice, do you have something?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So so I just wanted to um kind of address some of the comments made, uh just kind of in the public hearing. I think I think the applicant kind of addressed a lot of the things, just kind of restrictions, uses, et cetera, P D D. Um I think kind of for the development pattern, just how uh kind of addressing sustainability, it's kind of like applicant alluded to, uh just kind of with the future for Farmville Road, the future for uh North Donahue. So um applicant was correct, there is an active funded plan to look at uh the expansion of North Donahue, um and then just kind of the implications of the traffic study, kind of looking at that intersection. Uh that is also under consideration. So so we understand just kind of that there are constraints now, um just kind of from a traffic standpoint. That is a major consideration, just kind of in all developments that go on, especially intersections of this magnitude. Um the city is also exploring other options and other other developments, uh just kind of to get connectivity to alleviate traffic off of our major thoroughfares. So these are things that we're actively considering, I think, just kind of around uh the lack of green space, just kind of some of these areas. That's really kind of contingent with the development pattern um that you see um in Auburn, just kind of with these neighborhoods, like you'll have green space kind of allocated throughout them and not necessarily be in public parks. But that is one of the things that's also in the po- uh city of Auburn Parks and Rec radar of kind of getting more green space in this area. Uh some that we're having active discussions about, really kind of strategizing how to make that happen. And also like the applicant mentioned, uh just kind of with new developments and like uh the expansion of these roads, there are plans to put in sidewalks, bike lanes, multi-use paths as they're appropriate, kind of along different thoroughfares. I mean, these, there've been a lot of discussions around that. Uh I think the paradox with that is that in order to get those things there inevitably is development. So um just kind of just speaking to just kind of the different modes of transportation, sustainability as a focus. All those things go into consideration, then also just the traffic flow, the number counts, just kind of these intersections and what those upgrades need to be, what those upgrades are and the kind of end timelines like when they need to be made. And so I guess we can kind of talk about a little more, uh once co- once we get to the conditional uses and the P D D, we'll kind of outline that a little more. Uh but I just I just wanted to address that specifically, that this is not something um that, you know, like we're reacting to. It's something that we actively have plans for, it's just just kind of with the um frequency and I think the volume of development, sometimes it's in in different corridors. Uh things build up to a point where like, you know, we're we're playing catch up almost, so. But we do have active plans to improve a lot of those things that were mentioned.
Thank you. Um commissioners, we um.
I'd like to make a few comments if I could.
Sure.
Um I guess what I want, the point I would like, first, I appreciate Mr. Basquin in his comments. He was had a very good um provided us a very good understanding of how a lot of this planning works. But this planning isn't, we didn't just come up with this where we're at today in the last couple of weeks. This has been a long-term approach. There's a, the planning for the city is is and I'm I'm a military guy that's moved around a whole bunch of places too. And and what I've seen that is really destructive is urban sprawl, where everything just moves out and it just keeps building. We made a conscious decision some ten or fifteen years ago that where we we had an optimal boundary that that locked our annexations down so that we could grow and infill and do everything inside that optimal boundary. And as a result of that, you know, that's based on a strategic plan that we have. We have a comprehensive plan that we put together in two thousand and ten. And then what falls flows from that is a land use plan. And the land use plan kind of drives a lot of the, in the zoning ordinances, kind of drive a lot of these rules that we're sitting here dealing with tonight. And that's our purview, is to deal with those rules the way they're set now. And I think that that this, the 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 concern, especially about the uses, it was, and I'll reiterate again, cause it was it was it was addressed very well. That's very restrictive. We w- a- and if anything else wants to come forward and and be used, it comes back to us again. And you have another chance to go back and say, hey, I don't like it or not, is 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 part of the public. So we have a role to enforce the rules. You have a role to tell us what you want, which means get involved in strategic planning. Get involved in the comp plan, get involved in the different plans that the cities are doing. We're looking for public input on that kind of stuff. And so, you know, I I I think we're we're really have done a lot of good things over the last ten or fifteen years that have really made this a great process and the staff is 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 doing the best to keep that going for us. So um that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you. Um commissioners, any other discussion or motions?
I'll move to approve K S R Z twenty twenty four dash zero twelve with conditions.
With conditions. I have a motion on the table to approve with conditions, meaning that if the next item does not approve, it stays rural. I have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move forward to the P D D overlay and requests.
Right. All right. All right. So if that one uh wasn't complicated enough. So on this one, there's a little more nuances. Uh so just kind of like some of the some of y'all, y'all talked about on Monday, just like kind of some of the people who spoke tonight, just kind of for the public hearing. Um this is where a lot of the, this is where the uses can be further restricted than kind of what's outlined, so we'll kind of get to that at the end. I just wanna remind y'all kind of at the top that you can't just take them out, like you you need to take them out of both, not just the conditional uses. You need to take them out of the P D D as well, if you have any uses that you wish to restrict. And so I I make that point for anybody who has concerns about any of the listed uses. Um if you would like to list them in your public, in your comments in the public hearing, now would be the time, because now is the time to restrict it um from the P D D and the C U P, should they be approved. Um all right, so just kind of my uh.
Can I ask another question about that, just for clarification? What's the, what's, why do we need to have a discussion during the P D D about uses and the conditional uses?
Great question.
It's because the request came in with specific uses under their P D D.
Right, and so kind of kind of like like.
We're approving them in the conditional use.
Right, 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 right. So so there's the, there's the conditional use and there's also the P D D. And the master development plan with that is submitted with the P D D outlines those uses. And so let's say like you denied it on the conditional use, but it still is reflected in the P D D. That doesn't, like, those two are conflict and then the P D D would supersede that, right? And so you need to restrict them in both, that's why.
They can come back with further conditional uses at a later date.
Correct.
And opposite to that, a P D D doesn't have to have any approved uses at all, correct?
Does not.
It can just be an overlay for all of them.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, okay, so action requested, re- recommendation of city council to apply the planned development district designation to approximately thirteen point seven four acres and the comprehensive development district zoning district pending approval of R Z uh twenty 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 four twelve. Um general location southeast corner of North Donahue, West Farmville Road intersection. All right, next. All right, if you can go to future, if you can go to the submission, there we go. Okay, so, all right, so several things to kind of point out here. So like we're kind of talking about, the uses in a P D D are very important and it's essentially a contract between the developer and the city. This is important because this gives staff the confidence, the restrictions in the P D D give staff the confidence to make the recommendation for C D D and also make the recommendation for approval of this P D D. Now, a lot of the things that were listed out, some of those uses that I think kind of in the in the header there, a lot of those, those mirror a development that is similar to this, just kind of further down the road, Woodward Oaks. A lot of those things are just kind of uh pulled directly out of theirs and say, hey, you know, this is right down the road. I don't see why why we can't have these. Um so that is what those uses are and kind of like we were talking about. So you'll notice that the uses outlined in the P D D restrict a lot of that that residential that we would be concerned about and that is allowed by right and C D D. This totally restricts that. These, they're just, like I said, their intent is a full commercial development and like you kind of see with this layout. So the uses here are commercial, not residential. Um so they align with our future land use plan. Like I said, they meet the goal and kind of the aspiration of the city, kind of providing commercial at these hard intersections and also kind of providing commercial nodes in proximity to neighborhoods. That is one of the things that has been a priority for the city, uh just kind of, I mean, looking at the development pattern kind of around town. I mean, you you got Oblicker Road, E U D, uh you got um Oak Tree, Hamilton. Um all those uh where you have these hard intersections, where you have these shopping centers, et cetera, uh where like in proximity to residential. And so now I kind of wanna get to the layout and the importance of this. And so on this layout, um and I guess also there there are two things with this, just the item for the motion for the P D D, but then also for the waiver. And so this layout is important for several reasons. The layout that is submitted is oftentimes what will be built. That's kind of also kind of part of the contract. And so that's why I wanted y'all to hold your comments about kind of proximity, different uses, uh et cetera, et cetera. And so I know kind of one of the things that y'all, that we got a lot of comments about were the fast food kind of on the southern portion. So that second one from the bottom, uh that use of possibly having that move, having that move further up. Uh I guess one of the things that we want to point out, the buffers and that kind of surround and like in immediately adjacent to the residential areas, uh these are very substantial buffers. There is also a significant grade change um from where this is proposed to those people's backyards, to their front yards. It's roughly about a thirty foot drop from where they would be graded for what's what's shown here um to the road level on a lot of the homes kind of to the southeast there. Um so it's kind of, when we had conversations just kind of with the applicant, just kind of about the possibility of moving it, um I guess one of the things that that they did point out was that the distance from the drive-through as a possibility, uh like I said, if that's fast food, does meet, it's over a hundred feet, that that was one of the things. I know kind of there's, even though this is shown, um the general, kind of the trajectory of retail, like I think kind of the difference of it from residential is that, you know, they get these blanket approvals. And it's really just because, I mean, they're hunting tenants. That's the thing. I mean, they don't have any certainty kind of at this time about who's gonna go where, what's gonna go where. You know, they're really kind of pursuing tenants, so they really kind of like to get, you know, almost spaghetti against the wall. And that way they have different options of different brokers to kind of make things happen to kind of get uh fill this square footage. Um so just kind of from a layout standpoint, I mean, that's that's kind of what the uses are and I think a lot of those are kind of up for debate. It's kind of, there are things that you guys would like to see. And so if there are things that y'all are not comfortable granting the blanket use for, I ask that y'all restrict those kind of in this, in this. And then that way they they would have to come back on their own separate conditional use that would then have to be approved by the planning commission and the city council. So that's just kind of layouts from the use standpoint. Now, I wanna get to the layouts of kind of the road network and kind of the flow of it. So this is all their proposal. I know that we had questions just kind of about that entrance. Um if you could zoom in on the entrance on North Camden Drive, please, kind of draw attention to that. No, no, back. North Camden Drive. Yeah, very bottom, very bottom. All right. Where it says North Camden Drive, all right. So we got some questions about that now. This is strictly representative of the proposal from the applicant. This was not at the behest of staff. Normally, staff does push for connectivity and that is something that we normally do support. Like we were talking about, kind of taking pressure off these things, providing connectivity from the neighborhoods. Um I do wanna say that is something that we do support normally, like the connectivity. In this scenario, like I said, we can't speak to the requirement of it or anything because there hasn't been a traffic study to show if it would be needed, et cetera, et cetera. Um but for the layout, like I said, this is just something that has been proposed from them. Um and like I said, normally, this is this is something that we push for. I just also, I mean, we have other neighborhoods in town where there is commercial that immediately abuts neighborhoods that does not have connectivity that now in retrospect, at the time, the neighborhood fought it at the planning commission. Then in retrospect, the neighborhood would actually like to be able to walk down the street from their house into the commercial areas. Um and they can, cause there isn't a connection to it. Um so just kind of, those are the things that I kind of wanna bring your attention to, uh just kind of with the layout, different uses and then kind of how the P D D would work from a restrictive area. Now, if we could zoom back out on this layout. All right, so if you could go to the furthest east where it says elementary school zoning rule over there. Yeah, a little more, a little more over. All right, there we go. Okay, so this is where we're gonna need the buffer and so this was the waiver request with a buffer. So staff, staff is in favor of this uh of waiving the buffer requirement here, just because um so I know on the map, I guess on the on the last uh map where it says this is where the um elementary school is, elementary school is on this lot. The elementary school is on the eastern side of this lot and is on the complete other side. Uh this side's all woods, uh there's no intent. Uh I guess to to encroach upon that, um staff doesn't, staff that doesn't feel feel the need uh to add an additional buffer to it, like like I said, I mean, if the school was sighted on this side, that don't, that's not something that we waive. That's not something we'd be supportive of. Um like the lady mentioned earlier in the in the last public hearing that um proximity to these, these things do need to be considered. And that is why if this was on the western side, closer to the property line, we would not be in favor of waiving the buffer yard requirement. But since there's already a substantial buffer already on their side of wooded property, um we don't see any reason not to waive uh the buffer requirement there. Like I said, on other places where the buffer is, they have exceeded it greatly and like I said, that's something that they've paid a lot of attention to. Um a grade three, uh type three fence is required, um kind of also around the area. So that's, so that's one of the higher standards for the fence and also just kind of the grade change um in between the boundaries of where this is proposed to be and then also um where the road and like where the houses actually lay. So with that, turn it over y'all for any questions before we go to the public.
Yeah, I do have a question. To reiterate what you just said, you said there is a fence along that line, uh there would be required a a type three fence.
Yeah, yeah, type three fence, just kind of along the buffer yards, uh just kind of of the.
All all around it?
Yeah, yes.
All all around?
So not, so not along, I guess, like, you know, like like Farmville Road, North Donahue, but just kind of like with the buffers.
Just along the residential and the school.
Yep.
But we're waiving the buffer yard on the school side.
Right.
We're re- yeah, we're waiving the requirement to reduce it. And so it's not gonna be like the fifteen foot that, that's right, it's gonna be down to five. But like I said, that's because it's substantially wooded on the western portion of that elementary school lot.
But on the, but on the residential side, we, they actually, the developer came forward and increased the buffer and there's other requirements that.
Yes. Yes, yes, and so, like, like I said, that, uh, like the applicant mentioned, that was something that they were very, very sensitive to from the last uh, public hearing where they got a lot of comments and also that was something that they stressed to staff, where if they needed more buffer, they, they could do more buffer. Um, that was, and I, I guess that was also kinda their discussion, just kinda with the layout, they're open to moving things and rearranging things, um, of different uses, adding more buffer where needed or required, but they did wanna stress that they did add substantial buffer and there was also a substantial, uh, topographical change from those people's front yards, backyards until where the floor of, um, where the road to be for this, um, usage.
And there's a turn lane, A cell and D cell lanes.
Yes, and so I guess the requirement for those would be spelled out once there was a traffic study, but I guess there, there ha- has not been one associated with this project yet.
Okay. It was a separate condition, that's why I was confused.
Back to the buffer yards. Couple, two things, one, there is a statement in the document that talks about vegetation and landscaping as the buffer yard, not the fence, other places it does, so there's a little conflict there. You clarify, I think, that the fence will be required.
So you're talking about on the, on the five foot side?
Any of it.
It just says all of it.
It's on the, well, that's why I'd like a question from the developers to kinda talk about what, what his understanding is of that too. Like, where's the fence going?
Where's the fence?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Is it in the thirty foot buffer zone, which I think that's the answer, but it's not in the five foot buffer zone along the school side?
Okay, yeah, 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 I guess, um, if y'all, if y'all would like to ask that of the applicant when they come up.
Get an answer to that, Mr. Bassman?
Now? Okay, please come forward.
We're still trying to lay out what's going on here, uh, that'll help the public understand what, what's going on with that.
So, your question is, is if a, if a fence is required, where would it go in regards to the buffer?
If fence is required, I understand, where is it gonna be put? Where's it gonna be laid out, in that thirty foot buffer area?
Well, that's where it would have to be, it would either have to be, it would either have to be, uh, on the property line between the residential, right? In, 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 in the, and, or it would have to be right behind our curb line there, I think, um.
But that answers the question, it's on the thirty foot buffer.
If it's required, that's where it would be, if a type A fence is required, it would have to be along that buffer. I wouldn't wanna commit to which side, we're going, we would try and put it the best place to screen, I'd wanna put it on the high side or the low side to, to screen, you know what I mean?
No problem, it's just a matter of if it's, but it's not, but we're not putting it on the five foot buffer on the school side is what.
No, yeah.
It's not required.
Yeah, no, cuz there's the, like, like, our, our position is just that we're only waiving it because there's substantial wooded property over there, so.
Thanks.
So no fence?
No fence on the eastern side, yeah, there we go.
No.
No fence on the eastern side of butting the elementary school property, cuz there's a, there's multiple eastern sides of this.
But the fence is behind the residential.
Correct, yes.
It's really behind the commercial.
Well, yeah, but you know what I'm talking about.
Okay, other questions for applicant or staff before we open the public hearing? Um, I my question is the requests for, so I know in other areas of our city, we have, you know, they're called shopping centers and they're based on a hundred thousand feet, square feet or less, five hundred thousand square feet or less. But in this, we have the gas station, convenience store, package store, we have a restaurant, a bank, and then what I'm struggling with is sixty thousand square foot shopping center, but yet we kinda get around the hundred thousand dollar mark and we're, I mean, hundred thousand square feet mark and we're not technically calling it a shopping center with particular uses. I'm struggling with the sixty thousand square foot shopping center here.
Do you want it to be more or?
I don't.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, 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 I mean, we're kinda basing that kinda like, that's what they put forward, you know, that was, that was, that was a proposal. Uh, just so for everybody in the crowd, so a hundred thousand is this, is the magic number, there's this threshold, uh, that standards change, buffers change, intensity changes, just kinda like I mentioned earlier, um, intensity is duality of density from residential units, but also the scale of the use itself. So a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thousand square foot is kinda that one number and then there's a hundred fifty thousand, which is the other number where things do get bigger. And so different buffer yards, different standards, et cetera, uh, so that's why that number's relevant, this is under that, um, and so I guess this isn't.
Kind of. I guess that's a.
Let me, let me just speak to this, cuz I know what you're getting caught up in, is in the LDD zoning is what you're talking, referring to. In the LDD zoning, is one of the reasons why, you know, one of it. Is remember that you're very limited in uses in LDD unless you have a neighborhood shopping center designation. That's only where the neighborhood shopping center designation is needed in the LDD zoning. In the CDD zoning, we don't need that to build a shopping center. Okay?
Yes.
Because if, if you compare the LDD and the CDD and you compare the, uh, table permitted uses, most of the uses are conditional if they're part of a, of a neighborhood shopping center. So it's kinda like out at Moore's Mill, everything out there is LDD, the only place where you can have a lot of commercial uses is where we have a neighborhood shopping center at the Publix and a neighborhood shopping center at Oak Tree Village. That's why a lot of commercial can't string down the road anywhere and office and everything else can't string down the road there because of that LDD zoning.
Probably.
Trust me, it's taken me twenty years to figure this out.
Question is let's go back to Moore's Mill, okay? The only over twenty thousand square feet single tenant is the grocery store. And I'm struggling with if this particular thirteen acre piece of property in proximity to other commercial would need a sixty thousand square foot grocery store, potential tenor, tenant. Uh, that's me personally, within two and a half miles of another. Yep. That's what I'm struggling with as a use. So if you had a tenant, let's, I, I don't know how to do this, I don't even know if it's possible for me to even put this condition on it. But if you had a single tenant of twenty thousand or twenty five thousand square feet, uh, plus, can that be required to come back?
I guess it could, I, I would probably like to.
Like I'd hate for this building to be built and then be vacant.
I don't, I mean, that's, 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 those are kinda the risk of the developer, I mean, that's.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, um, so I know we do set thresholds kinda, kinda on square footage, I, I would like, I would like it tied more to a specific use. I don't really like getting amorphous on things, um, city attorney, would, would you like to weigh in on, on conditioning things by square footage?
I mean, I think the applicant is right in this particular case, that, uh, limiting things based on square footage uh, is a difficult thing to do unless it is specifically enumerated in the zoning ordinance already. Uh, because the purview, uh, of this body in interpreting the zoning ordinance is to apply, uh, the overarching principles of, uh, safety, health and welfare. And when we get into conditioning a use approval based on square footage.
But this isn't a use approval, it's a square footage approval in the way I'm reading it.
It is correct, it is a square footage approval of a commercial shopping center. And so unless there is a safety, health or welfare reason to restrict that as a condition on this particular application, I think that would be a difficult thing to enforce.
Okay. My thoughts have been made public. Okay, that was, that's all I have, do you have anything else before I open the public hearing? Any other thoughts? Okay. Um, we are gonna open the public hearing for the PDD overlay of Donna Crossing, thirteen acres, almost, um, just shy of fourteen acres for the overlay as well as uses. Please sign in, you can't, you, you, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kent Arthur, uh, I live at seventeen eighty-three Keystone Drive, um. You'll be, uh, happy to know I reduced my fifty-seven page manifesto to just three pages, so, and I will fit it all within five minutes. A lot of my comments are, I've got four points and several concerns or objections to present tonight. Um, first of all, thank you for the jobs you do because this is not easy, I can see it sitting and watching and I appreciate everything that you all do within the constraints and handcuffs that the job entitles you to. First of all, I moved here four years ago, just like my friend from California, um, I moved here from Northern Virginia, if anybody is familiar with Northern Virginia, I lived in the two fastest growing counties in the nation for the last sixty years. Fairfax County and Loudoun County, Virginia. I've seen development, I've seen development run amok. Uh, I've seen well-done development in one county and I've seen, uh, envious development in the other county. Um, and this is a whole nother ball of wax for me, but I still see signs similar to what I lived through most of my life in Northern Virginia. Just a couple of points, as, as, and, and I will say that I am not, I'm, I'm here for myself, I, I am working with a collaboration from inputs from friends and neighbors and I'm pseudo-representing them tonight as well. My first point is, as it is the mandate of the planning commission, you'll have to forgive me if I read, but I wanna make sure I get my words. They, they do amalgam a lot of things that we've heard tonight and I will try to avoid being redundant, but as is the mandate of the planning commission to act in the best interest of the community at large, not the self-serving interest of individual developers, I believe the argument for this development should be based on the character and fabric of the local community. How does this development benefit, augment and serve the local community? How would the development fit within the residential character of the local community? It's my opinion that developers should be required to submit site planning details and architectural profile details to show that the development being planned fits within the character, and I emphasize character, of the community and is not simply built in a cheap, get rich quick style development, consistent maybe, some might say, with previous developments. Point two, considering the future plans for widening and increasing the capacity of Donahue and Farmville to include increasing capacities at this intersection, the developer should be required to provide a traffic study and we know that that's mandated in the documents and access plans to the sites, uh, to show that the development will be supportive of the future roadway capacity plans and not a detriment. And so we're talking about these future plans. Uh, that site planning should show the planned ingress and egress to the sites and how they demonstrate excessive conflict points interfering with neighborhood accesses and traffic patterns of woodland pines. The approaches to the signalized intersection of Donahue and Farmville and the approach to woodland pines have already, in our opinion, exceeded capacity at the intersection and its access points due to continued development down Farmville and Mrs. James Roads. And there's more to come, we all know. Donation of any right of way to support those future projects and roadway improvements to Donahue and Farmville should be required concessions at this potential rezoning as well. I may be out of school, this may be for the city council, still gonna get it for the record. Point three, also if legally possible, the commission should require, now this is gonna hit a sore point, a concession that the developer remove all billboards under their ownership along Donahue Drive and agree to annex all properties currently not within the city along Donahue Drive to the city of Auburn. This would alleviate the issues and concerns of unregulated development along Donahue that continues to be detrimental to the fabric and character of the surrounding local community. I would also suggest that the commission heavily consider denial of this request regardless and move rezoning towards residential in nature that is far less in conflict with the local neighborhood's traffic and safety concerns. There is plenty of opportunity to chase development opportunities along Shug and Donahue across from the AU Club and Taco Bell. In addition, I remind everyone here that Old Sanford Development is coming soon, is underway and it will con- include a commercial district of its own. And we should consider the use of that Old Sanford Commercial District as the place to put properties such as this. So just a few things, observations and, and objections and notwithstanding the input from staff, it is, it is our belief that the development is non-compliant with the zoning ordinance regarding buffer standards. And the request to reduce the buffer adjacent, adjacent to Woodland Pine School from fifteen to five feet is excessive and does not adequately mitigate the potential noise, traffic and safety, notwithstanding that it's on the far east end of the property the school is.
Sorry, sir, you're like out of time, so I don't, I don't, I don't wanna.
Oh, man, I got, I got three more peonies. Will, will, will you give me one more, one and a half more minutes?
No, no, no.
Please. You gave her eight.
Oh, no, yeah, that's the problem with giving people extra time, really sorry.
Fixed traffic, the watershed needs to be looked at and we need to make sure that there's remediation because Sagachy Creek is all muddy already and we gotta stop that. I'll stand from now, thank you.
Thanks.
May I speak again for this one if I spoke for the last?
New public hearing.
Yes, new public hearing.
Thank you, again, Emily Antoniak, um, sixteen seventy-nine Poplar Ridge Drive. I'd kinda like to pick up where he left off with the reduced buffering on the edge that is the only entrance for all of the car riders for our school at Woodland Pines. So I know that you used the term substantially wooded lot, that is the space right next to where I drive through to drop off my five-year-old every day. I'm not sure what the numerical value of substantial means, like in, in this situation, but I'm wondering when I'm looking at the maps, is this substantial wooded lot? It, it doesn't show the actual road that is the current only entrance, it's the car loop line. Um, and if we earlier were told that there are future plans that include sidewalks and bike lanes so that our kids can access woodland pines, I don't see those future five-lane road on Donahue reflected, it looks like the current three lanes. I don't see the sidewalks and the bike lanes and the multi-use pathways that were mentioned earlier in the drawings, so I'm wondering when all of the future plans that apparently are gonna be taking place within the next five to six years or beginning in the next five to six years, how does that impact the buffering? Because it seems like you either lose the parking spaces or you lose the buffering from their plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi. Me again, Jennifer Jackson, seventeen thirty-six Post Oak Court. Um, kind of listening and remembering back to the comments, I know there was a gentleman that did do a, um, sort of a an environmental study and, and how would the drainage will be affected and you were talking about levels and what retaining walls? Um, where, who builds those, how does that affect, um, properties, where's the water drain? Um, we already have flooding close to the bridge area, what's gonna happen with that? Um, just throwing that out there for you to think about, um, the list of things that are possible um, that could be in this area, things that I don't wanna see, I don't want in my area, I have no need for any of these things near my home, I know you're thinking, oh, commercial, I don't shop at that gas station, there are other gas stations, I don't need anything around my house, I bought that because it was rural. I want it to stay houses, we need small houses for single families, we don't need another damn grocery store. I don't want anything ATM, I don't want a bank or drive-through, I don't want another convenience store or small grocery store. There's already a Dollar General behind my house, fast food restaurant, no thank you, we have plenty of those. Um, gas station services, no. Um, banks, we don't need another one, we all do online banking, I've got how many apps? Um, cleaner, dry cleaners, no thank you, electronics repair, no. General merchandise store, oh, that's too vague for my, for my, I don't know. Hardware stores, thank you, we have plenty. Health and personal care stores, what is that, CVS, Walgreens, no thank you. Office supply stores, no. Precious metal sales? Reed Poncho, I mean, what, what are we doing here? Specialty food stores, what, we have, we have a Taco Bell down the street, like, seriously? No on all of these, please, um, no. Um, and then as you think about it, again, what is substantial buffer? What am I looking at as a substantial buffer to my backyard? Um, and most of the people in North Donahue are affected more than I am, I already have a beautiful illuminated billboard in my backyard. Um, but, you know, thanks, please think about that. But, you know, thanks. Please think about that. Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome back.
I'm Jim Green, sixteen eighty, North Camden Court. I'm the guy right there at the little cul-de-sac, right there where all of the action is. I'm a retired minister. Would it be inappropriate that the mine can only receive what the rear can endure? Could we ask everybody to stand up for fifteen seconds or so?
Huh.
Okay.
Is this our reset? Recession?
I'm sorry, my legs were even going to sleep, so I probably just...
Thank you, welcome back.
We're here discussing something that eight years ago was discussed and was voted by the city council to be inappropriate eight years ago. And now, we're back to the discussion again. And I, I can feel the heart of all of us who live there and don't want something like that at the end of our block or around us. But as a minister, I could ramble for quite a while, so I've written it down too. And let's see if we can move it through. Apologize. We moved here twenty-three years ago and bought a home on Camden, in Camden Ridge, in the country. That's important. We purposely wanted to live in the country, not in the city. Now, I've heard it said that our area, which it has, developed so many more homes and they need businesses close by. No, we don't. We can make a decision how close we want. We drive, we're mobile, we go where we want. We have plenty of conveniences nearby. There are plenty of stores to get to to dip what we need. To my knowledge, there are no strip malls in Auburn that have residential homes on all four sides. And there's a reason, of course, for that. You don't want that right in the middle of my backyard, or in my case, my front yard. All strip malls have wide double roads in front of them. Donahue and Farmville roads are single traffic. Now, we're told that it's gonna become five lanes, which would restrict a lot of property there for that business as well.
Mr. Green, uh, Mr. Green, Mr. Green. So, um, we have a policy, just kinda about showing visuals, and can you pause the timer? Yeah, so, we have, we have a policy about showing visuals. If you wanna show visuals, you have to submit them before noon, like, the day of the meeting. And so, we, we do that to applicants, but we also do that to the public just 'cause I don't know if you followed our city council meetings, but we would like to vet what is being shown, that, so, I, sorry.
I just wonder, I don't know how many of the committee has driven down that road and seen what it is.
There you go.
And that pretty well gives it all, so I guess we can't do that, right?
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so, so I guess if you'd like to, oh, so if you would like to show that to council, please send that to the, I, I'd say probably the city manager, that, that way they can have that ready, show to council and also, yeah. No, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would've been helpful, but, okay. The homes in that area, surrounding that area, run around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars now. The one, two doors from me just sold for three hundred and sixty-five thousand on our little cul-de-sac. And I want my, I was gonna show you a picture of our beautiful home that would look out over Seven Elevens and gas stations and whatever it might be there. My wife had to have a amputation a while back. So, she restricted pretty much to a walker or something, she has a new prosthetic. But our little cul-de-sac is her world, to be able to get out on her scooter and get out under the fresh air and, and all that. It's just wonderful. And I know that if we have a business down there with delivery trucks and trash trucks and everything else will be coming and making a mistake as they do from time to time without any of that, where my little cul-de-sac for my dear wife will not be available to her. So, this hits personal. We have a safe home, in a safe situation. I understand about the billboards in property, in country, in county property in Auburn, you can build anything you want as long as you own it. And that's what's happened. I wanted to show you some pictures. So, what that would look like with those buildings there. I would like to show you the construction picture that would take two years of digging up and moving this and moving that. Two years of that, easily, to be able to build that. Why did I mention three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? As a minister, I've always done disaster relief and mission projects and all of our funds have always gone to helping people and we never charge a penny for it. Our home is our retirement.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And if we blow this, it's gonna desperately affect...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Green, you've run out of time. So, you can talk in the, you can talk in the next public hearing, you have another five minutes, yeah.
I pray you vote no.
My name is Seth Humphrey. I live at sixteen seventy-three Stone Point Drive. That is the street to the left side of that image, second house on the left. You're looking at my future mess right now. There's a lot of talk about eleva, changing elevation and buffers. Those homes there in Donahue Ridge, thirty-foot elevation change. You got a building on top of that elevation, another twenty feet. That's all these people are gonna see, is building. That's horrible for them, I'm sorry for them, I'm sorry for me. If we're talking about buffers, what buffer am I going to get? What's gonna be between my house and that monstrosity? Nothing's been offered so far. I don't want the light pollution that's going to bring. I don't want the sound pollution that's going to bring. I don't want the crime that's gonna bring. I don't want the smell it's going to bring. It's inappropriate, inappropriate use for my neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on the public hearing?
Good evening.
My name is Gene Elkins. I live at twenty ninety-five Felicity Lane. I'm one of the houses right behind that loading dock right there. I just wanted to mention, I won't plan on coming up here tonight, but we mentioned the thirty-foot buffer. And everybody is saying that, like, wow, that is a really big buffer. But if you look at those tiles right there, those are two-foot tiles. There are twelve tiles from you to you, that's thirty-six feet. If we parked an eighteen-wheeler in her chair, how would he feel right now? That is not a buffer. The only way to protect this, to protect the residents in these houses is more buffer. I mean, I'm, I'm not against building there, but there's just not enough buffer for the residents there. We're building high on top of them. We're gonna have all this water draining down on top of them. We're gonna be looking at this, but a hundred, thirty feet is not enough. If you look at, like, Sam's Club, I've measured the buffer there, it's like a hundred and ten feet. That seems more appropriate, right? But thirty feet is not enough. Let's, let's talk about the, uh, what's the drive-thru, right? Imagine the drive-thru is right on the other side of that window. Does that, does that seem like a lot of buffer to you? So, we look at this plat overhead, but we don't get a sense of scale. And I think you really need to understand the sense of scale here. 'Cause thirty feet is not a lot. A hundred feet to cars and a drive-thru window speaker is not a lot. Like I said, if there was a drive-thru window right on the other side of this window right here, I think we would all know it. And all the people in those houses would know it too. Thank you.
Thank you, please sign in.
Hi, I'm Angela Hill. I live at two zero six one Felicity Lane. My house will be in the backyard of those drive-throughs and the bank drive-throughs. So, my issue is, when I, when they talk about buffers, I want you to understand what will happen in a construction point of view. Donahue is a higher elevation than my house on Felicity Lane. And so, to build those buildings, it will be graded down. And so, when you're looking from my backyard, all you will see is buildings. All the trees will come down for grading. There will be no natural buffer left. Anything that you plant there will take years and years and years to mature. A wall that's six or eight feet high will not screen anything from my backyard because I'll be looking up at it. And I'll be close enough to hear, can I take your order? I'd like a number four, you know, with a Diet Coke. I'll hear all that from my backyard, from my bedroom windows on the backside. So, just consider, please, the residents along Felicity Lane especially. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Anyone else wanting to speak on this public hearing for the PDD? You can come back. It's a new, new public hearing.
I'm Katie Murray, seventeen oh three Crescent. You mentioned a couple of things, and I'm not gonna ask a question, I'm just gonna kind of pose it back. You mentioned about, that the city is considering green space in this area. And if we could look back at the picture that you showed initially that shows the part that does, isn't owned by the city and then the part that was open for development, would you mind scrolling back to that? You're probably not controlling that picture. The initial... Yes, please, the beginning, uh, something like that, right? And you were mentioning, and it had red outside the city limits, and you said that the city is considering green space in this area? So, I was just looking at the map thinking, I wonder where that's planned? The green space in, in this area. And the other thing that obviously scared me from a safety standpoint with the two schools and the children and the neighborhoods and the backyards, something that you said about how the developer will just be hunting for tenants. And that's really alarming. And it goes back to what I mentioned before with, one of the PDD uses is all other uses. So, it's really hard to restrict anything anyone could ever think of. That would be detrimental, that would be unsafe, that would be scary for young children. And then, one other thing, you mentioned that there's a neighborhood in Auburn that fought the connection but now wants to walk there. And I was just wondering which commercial properties are there? Probably not some of the ones that we've mentioned. But those are some things. When you mentioned that the city is considering green space for this area, I just couldn't visualize where that was planned. But that space that we're talking about would be wonderful for a green space and allow the children to move safely. But, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, discussions?
Okay, yes, of course. You said on this one that any conditional uses also have to be pulled out of the PDD.
Correct.
Okay. Which is all, let me ask this to clarify. The conditional uses that the applicant is asking for are these? Are those located in the next one, which is the conditional uses?
Correct.
Any other, because she's right, it said all other uses. Any other uses he wishes to have, other than these that are listed specifically, he's gonna have to reapply.
Yes, he'd have to submit another conditional use application and come back into the entire process.
I want that, I wanted that clarified. Okay, with that in mind, because I've already expressed this in packet meeting, I have a problem with drive-thru restaurants. And I would like that pulled out. I have, please...
Can we have our discussion?
Please don't. I have a problem with motor food courts. And I would like that pulled out.
Hold up, I'm so sorry, I apologize. But what I'm seeing in conditional uses spelled out versus what I'm seeing in PDD, not spelled out.
Not spelled out, right.
That is where I'm confused. So, these I need to take into consideration under the PDD, the all-spelled-out ones.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I guess, um, I would say...
Mine's worth a foot, mine.
Yeah, 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 so, all you need to do, I, I would say explicitly restrict those and like, if you like, just incorporate those, like I said, those, let's say, five or however many uses.
Because if not, I'm gonna have to go through the table and restrict a lot of more things.
No, 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 no. I, I think kinda...
I've not been asked for.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I think what would work would be on the ones that y'all explicitly do not want allowed from the, within the conditional use, explicitly include that in the motion of the PDD. That way, you guys aren't listing thirty uses that you would like to allow. Use the ones that you explicitly do not want. And so, Dana has stated too, I guess y'all can deliberate those.
I'm not through.
Yep, there, there you go, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the conditional use, um, one, the next one that we're going to, it says a veterinary office kennel with outdoor pens. No outdoor pens.
No outdoor pens, it doesn't say, it doesn't specify.
It says with outdoor pens.
Go further and say no kennels, period.
Veterinary office kennel with the proposed plan developed...
Yeah, and then down below it says vet, listed below later...
I see that now, sorry.
Says veterinary office kennel. Okay, which to me is an outdoor pen. So, no kennel, outdoor kennel, nor, no outdoor pen. I'd like that removed. So, I've said motor food court.
Fast food drive-thru, and then also the no veterinary with outdoor kennels.
Yes, yes.
Fast food drive-thru or all dri, I'd go farther and say all drive-throughs.
Yeah, you gotta bank there too, with a drive-thru.
Well, if you want to, you can add that film, all their drive-throughs, that's fine.
They, they can all be brought back at another time.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, while we're on PDD then, if you feel this way, then you can approve the PDD with no uses. That is your option. Every single one of them would then come before us. That is an optional. No, you would get none. Yeah, but you have to then look at this and then you just...
I'm good with that.
Does that defeat the purpose of the PDD? I thought the PDD was so that the developer wouldn't have to come back multiple times.
That is what the request is for.
Okay.
Yes, that is facts, that is what the request is for.
The PDD just lays an overlay that says, once we agree on what the conditional uses are, you gotta put those in.
Right.
And that's all.
And if we, and if we submit or we approve a PDD with no conditions...
Well, the, the next item are the conditional uses.
Okay, so, we're saying we can, that conditional uses are approved, but they have to come back forever.
If you choose to do that, my... What, the reason I'm saying this is because if we get into, you want these five, he wants these three, I disagree completely, you want these three. I'm trying to avoid that.
Gotcha.
Gonna get to that on the conditional use.
We're being told we've gotta address it in this one too.
Right, you have to do something in here.
And I agree.
We have a waiver to do, we have a PDD to do. The PDD has a... The PDD has a request within it for uses. That doesn't have to do, that doesn't have to be approved with uses. But it can still be approved as a PDD.
Gotcha.
Is that correct?
Is that correct, what the staff say?
Director.
Man, alright, man. Okay, I, I would be, I would feel a lot better, I think, if, if, like I said, if the motion was just for restricting the ones that you wanted? And I think kind of come into an agreement on that. Like I said, and not, not explicitly listing the ones that y'all are for, but the ones that y'all are explicitly opposed to. Because I think that would be however many uses that y'all are. Because I think, because I think kind of on, on the other side of this, kind of like one of y'all, like y'all mentioned? A PDD that doesn't have the blanket approval of at least several uses, really does kind of defeat the purpose, so.
He's got square footage.
But no uses to, to, to put in them, yeah.
So, we're back to uses excluding uses.
I would say name those are the uses that, that you don't want in this motion, yes, the uses you do not want.
The challenge I have is that there are so many broad uses that?
Well, out of the ones he has stated, it, it, they are, I mean? Drive-throughs, motor food courts? And vet offices with outside kennels. Okay? Those are my three.
So, where would we be if we just named all of them?
That you don't want any of them.
No, I'm just saying, like, if she named three, she named four, five, and it took them all up away? So, then where would we be?
I just technically you could do that, I'd recommend not doing that.
No, no.
But I mean, you, you could.
I'm just asking, because if we start getting into three, four, five, six, seven?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm, so I'm trying to move away from the, the hypothetical of, of the what-if. I'm asking like, what ones do you want restricted? So far, I've heard three, I guess I've heard four, because Phil would like a contin, continuation of, of the drive-through exclusion. I guess if y'all are naming, if y'all are going to end up at a point where all of you have reservations about certain ones, then I would say disclose that, and that way we can, y'all, y'all can kind of make a decision.
And I've said that before. Okay, well, we can move forward and still continue to have the discussion. And you will keep up with this list for us, or someone will keep up with the list?
I'll, I'll keep up with the list.
Can I ask a clarification on a couple? So, the convenience store, small grocery, less than three thousand, is that to cover the existing? Building that's there?
Yeah, I guess I would.
As well as the gas service station?
Yeah, I, I would say that, I'm pretty sure that, that's going away, but I mean, the applicant can clarify that. I mean, they can also come up here and, and answer this question.
Because I would be opposed to any additional of those, I, I don't think that's appropriate. Additional gas service station? I think, I think they've already got one there.
But will it carry forward because it's already existing? Gas station, convenience store, and package store?
Yeah, 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 it's alright.
The PDD already has some approved uses.
Yeah.
Question's Walker.
I mean, as I said earlier, there's several so general, I mean, somebody brought up and I agree with them, general merchandise store, what does that mean? What are we going to get? Are we going to be happy with it? Is the, are the residents going to be happy with it? Is the city going to be happy with it?
Well, I will go with, how do you have a commercial node with no drive-throughs? I'm sorry, how do you have a commercial node with no drive-throughs?
Not saying no drive-throughs, not saying ready to make a decision on it now? Until we figure out further down the line where we have an understanding of what exactly is going in there.
Right.
I think as time goes on, you'd get that sort of information.
Exactly. So, I'm back to, everything should be conditional and come before us.
Well, that's what we're doing in the next?
We're going to do it here too.
I named mine three.
I guess my question would be, what's the, I mean, i- is the? Objection to drive-throughs that it's too much traffic, too much noise, what's the overall objection? Because?
In my case, to me, it's about circulation of traffic. And I have no clue of, you know, circulation of traffic would?
A lot of the drive-throughs now don't even have voice boxes anymore, they don't do them that way.
We don't know, because we don't know what's out, that's the problem.
Depends on what type vendor you have.
I'll tell you what my objection is. My objection is? The two drive-throughs are backed up by residential. Drive-throughs tend to stay open extremely late at night. If you're trying to sleep, you don't want to drive through with everybody driving, you hear it. So, that's my objection right now. But again? I'm not a firm no until we see something, what's going there? And how they're going to stack the traffic, how late they're going to be, you know, those types of things that we usually get? When they have a conditional use and they come to us. I realize that the applicant doesn't know, doesn't have a client to fill those spaces right now. They may have some idea, but they don't have a client right now. And so, they're asking for this now. But I would rather, once they get a client and we see what it's going to be? We know more information, the public then can come back? Because we'll have to have a public hearing and say yay or nay. Okay?
I, I need to know if we are deleting uses or if we are moving forward with some sort of PDD with no approved uses? Except for the ones that are existing.
They're deleting the uses? Except for the ones that are existing, I mean?
Other than the three that have been voiced? What other uses would the rest of the commission request be removed?
I mean, I've already stated one, general merchandise is too broad? In my opinion? Several of these are things that I don't even see being a benefit to the? That part of the community. They're just a laundry list of certain things that I'm not sure are, I mean, I can go through all those, but I think we can all look at them and see. I mean, just, for example, a copy shop? What's the benefit? And aren't we trying to benefit the development out there? These are to benefit the people who live out there.
You don't need a UPS store?
Yeah, 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 so, so the idea of having commercial nodes in proximity to residential neighborhoods is for those amenities, those amenities to be in proximity to people? And I guess, I, I don't want to interrupt y'all's deliberation, so I, I did want to respond to some of the public comment? But then also, I, I think there were several questions just kind of related to drainage that I think the applicant did need to answer as well.
Yeah. Applicant, do you mind coming forward, please? Mr. Masquin?
Alright. Which specific ones, just to drainage in general?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, so, there's several concerns just kind of around drainage, and then I think also, just kind of from a buffering standpoint? Just kind of talk about like, kind of what was the idea kind of behind some of the buffers, etc.
Okay, so, from a storm drainage perspective, the city requires us to provide detention. This is a, this is in the Salga Hachi watershed where water quality will be required as well, so more stringent water quality requirements. So, there'll, there'll have to be some form of detention provided, whether it's above ground or, or below ground. There'll have to be detention from a stormwater perspective. I think from the buffering and, and I think some of the other questions about, hey, are we taking into account the future road improvements? We've met extensively with the city and tried to get plans for how much room do they need from us, right? And the city's still working through those guidelines on what exactly they need. The current plan that we have right now shows ten feet of right-of-way dedication along Farmville Road and along North Donahue Road? As part of the current site plan. Off of that right-of-way dedication is our addition, is where our landscape buffers are based upon. So, they're, they're based upon the, you know what I mean? They're going to be even further into our property than the current property lines? Because they're based upon the, the required right-of-way dedication at this point. The city's still trying to figure out exactly whether they need a couple, a little bit more along North Donahue or not? But they feel like the ten feet we have shown along Farmville Road is sufficient. In regards to buffering? We do have, all the major corridors in the city require the fifteen-foot landscape strip along those frontages. So, along Farmville Road and, and along North Donahue. In regards to the back? Yes, we're, we're providing twice as much buffer as required, fifteen foot is required, we're showing the thirty. Our goal is to try and preserve as much of that vegetation as we can? In, within that buffer? And, and we'll have, you know, and if, if fencing and everything, like I said, is required, we're going to try and put that in the most optimal place to try and help screen as well. In regards to, what was the other question, do you remember? Was there another one I needed to address?
I think those were the main ones, just kind of around the drainage.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, yeah, there, there is drainage coming through this site and entering these adjacent properties. So, you know, hopefully, some of the existing drainage issues will get resolved when we develop ours and, and are able to move that water? And efficiently put it within the storm drainage system instead of, you know, draining through some of these folks' yards and stuff. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I mean, in regards to the uses? To your point? You know, the requirements in the zoning ordinance in regards to the amount of stacking required and those types of things? All of that stacking and stuff is, is, is adequate spacing within a current site plan? Within where we're showing drive-throughs? You know, those, those sites are laid out to meet the city's requirements on stacking. You know, in regards to uses, I know you were worried about the sixty thousand square feet? The grocery building that we have in the attached retail, that's sixty thousand square feet combined? So, the small shops on the sides are part of that. As we mentioned, you know, we do have a grocery user that we're proposing to go in here? And so, you know, it, it's not going to be a sixty thousand square foot grocer, you know? It will be, it will be a smaller user than that, from that side.
So, that's multiple businesses?
Yeah, so, attached on the sides, yeah, so?
This is remaining.
Yeah, so that, that, that sixty thousand includes all of that, that's one sixty thousand square foot building, shops, grocery, combined. All the other uses are, are, are specific there. But I mean, like I said, is, is, if there's certain uses that you are, that you, that you're okay with? You know, let's, let's get those, if there's some that you have concerns on or specific use? You know, I would say exclude those, if, if you're so intent for this thing to move forward. I mean, I would rather, I would rather get through this with a couple uses than no uses and be back arguing each individual use. I don't think some of the uses are, are pretty straightforward in regards to, to go in there. You know, in regards to generating traffic? You know, most of the commercial uses in these node principles are serving the node that's there. It's, it, you know? With having commercial uses here, it's going to prevent people from going down Donahue and going through Shug to go to other places. You know, you're providing that convenience in regards to, you know, a two and three mile radius around this. So, it, it will take some of the pressure off of adjacent commuting traffic? With those, those goods and services being available, you know, immediately adjacent to their, to their neighborhoods? From that side, so?
I mean, I, I, I know it's what happens, I know, I know that's what happens, but? Okay.
Well, maybe just, how about I propose just, you know, we all have different ideas of what we think may need to be pulled out of that? You know, if we pull something and they're interested in putting, having that, they'll come back and have?
Right.
Conditional use hearing. So, maybe instead of saying, yeah, well, I want it, and yes, I don't, well, we have an, an agreement that if you don't want it, let's put it on the table, otherwise?
I've asked for that, are you ready to say?
What we're saying is we need more information.
Right, absolutely.
So, I have three from Mrs. Camp?
Yeah, yeah, so there was the three that Commissioner Camp wanted, there was, Phil wanted the extension of all drive-throughs? And I think Walker wanted the exclusion of general merchandise.
And I wanted the exclusion of the dog kennel with the pens.
Yes.
One of mine, drive-throughs and the food court.
Okay, yeah, 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 thank you. So, so the three drive-throughs, there were the fast, so there was the fast food drive-through, but then the continuation of all drive-throughs, that would include banks. There was the motor food court, there was the veterinary with the outdoor kennels? General merchandise.
I'm, I'm going to add precious metal sales.
So, clarity on that, pre- precious, precious metal sales?
Jewelry store?
Jewelry store is not a place where you can go get, I guess you could get tungsten, like, if you just want a raw tungsten for like an anvil, but it's a jewelry store, so? Yeah, and, and I guess so, why isn't it called a jewelry store if everybody in the audience, there's this thing called NEX codes? Very, very granular, all of these things, it's really named, these very technical things, when you look at it, it's actually just a jewelry store. Very sorry for being confusing. But that, that's what it is, it's not a place where they'll be smelting down iron and stuff.
I can't go get a gold brick?
No, maybe you can, but?
And it's not a pawn, and it's not a pawn shop.
And, yeah, not a pawn shop.
So, we only have four? And that is what I am currently hearing?
Food court? Vet with outdoor kennel? Drive-throughs?
And general merchandise.
And general merchandise.
Yep, general merchandise.
Okay, commissioners, with those four, with this PDD, do you want us to do the waiver first?
No, 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 no.
With these four, with this PDD overlay? Would you care to make a motion? And be specific, please?
I'll try. I'll try, but y'all will correct me, I'm sure. I make a motion to forward to the city council with recommendation for approval, the PDD exempting the following?
Uses.
Uses, okay. And the following uses are? General merchandise? Any drive-through? A vet with an outdoor kennel? And a mobile food court?
So, I could?
Sorry, question, do we need to also address the convenience store grocery, small grocery, and the gas service station since it's in this list?
Already there.
They're already there.
They're already there.
But, again, that opens it to others, right?
Yeah, so you don't want to dish on them?
That's my, that's my concern.
I don't think you can, so? I know conditional uses are, you can kind of put any condition on things.
They'll come back and?
Yeah, I, but so?
We'll say no.
I would say kind of my, my understanding and interpretation of how conditional uses work? If you're going to approve a conditional use, it is for the entirety of the site. And I get it that like, what that would mean on its face is that it could be replicated? That is, the use is there, it's in it, I guess it can be replicated.
But it's still a conditional use to PDD.
Yes, but I, I, I do not think you can put a condition on something of this can, there cannot be multiple of these. I, I, I would say that, that's not my understanding of how conditional uses work. So, I guess you, alright.
That's what the lawyer's saying. I have a motion on the floor without a second currently.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, motion carries. Thank you, alright. Now, conditional uses? What date is city council?
Waiver.
Oh, waiver, shoot, I'm so sorry.
Waiver.
Um, my apologies, I just got really excited that that one was? The waiver is for the buffer on the east side from fifteen to five feet? And no fence?
Yes, no fence, and so, and so I guess we don't have the aerial, and I said, I know this looks like we're just kind of on the computer, internet, not the case. So, from the aerial that, that we have, there's a drive-through lane that, I couldn't measure it on, on my computer, Phil, Phil, y'all give me a second.
What date is city council, I'm sorry, can someone, before they leave?
February the eighteenth.
February the eighteenth is city council for all of these items.
All right, so, so it's kind of, when I say substantial, what we have right now from our aerial, from the edge, like the shortest edge, from the entrance of the drive-through that pickup lane for Woodland Pines to the property line of this development is four hundred and thirteen feet. And that's the, that's the slimmest portion of, like I said, it widens out as it goes further south, so it does get more than that as it gets closer to the residential side. And so, the waiver, yep, all wooded. And I, this isn't relevant to the, to the waiver decision, but I know there was, there was a mention in the, in the public comment session just about green space. I mean, green space kind of in this larger, general northwest Auburn amorphous area, I would say kind of everything north of fourteen, west of college, extending infinitely out, not in what you're presented on the future landings plan. So not kind of like what anything that was kind of presented tonight, just kind of generally in this north amorphous area of kind of the northwest Auburn kind of corridor and extended further out, kind of looking at parks kind of in this area, the possibility of, that's something that's generally on the city's radar. There isn't a specific plan tied to anything that was presented tonight. It's just kind of a focus of, we recognize there's a dearth of parks and that's something that we do need to address.
All right, I'm going to move to approve the waiver for the buffer yard on case RZ twenty twenty-four zero one six, Donna Crossing PDD. Waiver.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the waiver, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, two conditional uses for Donna Crossing.
Okay, all right, so actual requested, recommendation to city council for a conditional use approval, then it kind of reads out what the uses are. And so then the general location, southeast corner, North Donahue Drive, West Farmville Road, I shouldn't go to the map. All right, so kind of, I guess actually, the actual proposal. Yeah, there we go. So, kind of like, kind of like we mentioned, just kind of from a use standpoint and the conditions associated with it. The PDD kind of outlined like a lot of those uses, and I kind of hammered out that discussion, kind of like I mentioned with the PDD, the road network and kind of all that, the traffic study is included, just kind of as a part of the process that they'll need to, they'll need to eventually get that done. That'll speak to a lot of the site layout and then kind of, once we know a lot of these uses, then we'll be able to determine kind of what the traffic demand's going to be and what those expectations are and what improvements will need to be made associated with those. And so just kind of for everybody out in the audience, kind of understand what the development process is. So this is the public development, this is a public review scrutiny. So that's when things have to go before the planning commission, there's a public hearing that has to go to city council, public gets to speak, et cetera. So then there's also, on top of this, there is an internal review process that we call a development review team. And so, everything that comes through the city that gets approved, built, et cetera, gets intently scrutinized internally, whether you see it or not. These things go through inspections, public safety, environmental services, engineering, et cetera, kind of determining down to the granular detail heard today, just kind of what made, what requires guardrails, it's the steepness of the slope on the road, I didn't know that, I learned that today. But those are the granular details that I looked at, even from the direction of, the direction of drive-throughs, I guess also associated with what will be, need to be submitted for each of these conditional uses will have to be a photometric plan. As for everybody concerned about light pollution, you can't have light pollution that goes across the property line, that is something that can be in condition, that can be stipulated, that is verified by staff, that does have to be submitted. So when they're saying that they want these things to come back, for them, that way you guys can have a comment on it. That will happen, just kind of for the things that aren't included, kind of with this conditional use. But these things are rigorously looked at internally, and kind of like I've said before, there's a lot of granular details that are reviewed in the development review team process, and in that process, sometimes, a lot of the projects that come forward, they get heavily altered because they don't meet the standards that we have for the city. And so whether that be buffers, whether that be turn lane requirements, whether that be distances just come from the acreage that the site has, they can't meet some of the things, these are things that we really do look at and we really do scrutinize. So I, I guess kind of, kind of with that, I just want to say, once the, once the traffic study comes in and once we know kind of some of those, those explicit uses, this site will probably be altered. Not, not, not necessarily, not greatly, but just kind of including those expanded lanes, those turn lanes, kind of what those buffers are actually, where those buffers are going to be, the direction of some of those drive-throughs, and also I think the siding of them as well. That was one of the things that they did say they were open to, if some of those drive-throughs needed to move further north and like kind of away from the residential, that was also something applicants said that they were open to as well, and that's something that can be considered once it comes back, since it wasn't allowed under the blanket of conditional use. But I just wanted to assure everybody that those things are looked at, I know there was another comment in the public comment session just about light pollution and those things, but those are things that are greatly looked at and scrutinized in the internal review process. So, though, just with those conditional uses, I just wanted to say that the only thing, all right, it's not the only thing, but one of the things that would look different from this would be, once the mitigation is, I guess, discovered what it needs to be to upgrade the roads, whether that be on Farmville or North Donahue, ingress, egress, like I said, I think also the condition for North Camden Drive, those are things that are going to be vetted, further scrutinized, and just kind of the general road network and the layout may change subject to whatever those requirements may be, so.
That's correct, this is stop one.
Yes.
On a long journey. Does the public have a copy of what recommendation to city council of all of these uses?
Yeah, so all of this stuff is in, all of this stuff is publicly available, it's on the website, can be printed. I guess if you guys didn't want like the nine hundred, I guess it's not nine hundred pages, this is actually, it's pretty short. However, the hundred long pages, you could just call us and request to get this, like just these packets, that way you guys can actually just get the visuals. So they are in there, but I mean, you could just extract it out of the packet as well, so.
I ask that because I didn't know if you knew, when we are looking at this list, to be transparent with you, what is on this list versus what we're taking off of this list? So I was going to read this list, and then when voting on what potentially may or may not be still removed, that is what I was going to share prior to discussion and or public hearing, is that okay?
Yeah, if you guys want to read it.
Okay. Currently, the recommendations for city council, conditional use approval for a church, daycare center, independent living facility, nursing home, gymnasium, office, ATMs, bank with drive-through, convenience store, small grocer, fast food restaurant, mobile vendor courtyard, food court, gas stations, service station, retail, vet clinic with outdoor pins, neighborhood shopping center, banks, barber shop, beauty shop, books, hobby, music, sporting goods store, brew pub, clothing stores, copy shop, dry cleaners, electronics repair, florists, garden supply, general merchandise store, grocery store, again, hardware store, health and personal care, office supplies, stationery, gift stores, precious metal store, AKA jeweler, personal studio, restaurant, specialty food stores, vet office with kennel, not outdoor, indoor. That's the current list and what we are making a decision on right now. So, do you have any questions for applicant or staff before I open the public hearing? This is what's out there right now. Okay.
I guess, does anyone, do we need a recess at this moment before the public hearing, or I guess?
Hard to make it through these three before. I'm feel you, I feel you, I feel you. We are still on number three. You're welcome to go if you absolutely need to. I would like to open the public hearing at this time on conditional uses of Donna Crossing.
I'm Sherri Senior, and I live at eighteen seventy-three Armistead Lane, that's in Camden Ridge. I would just like a clarification on something. Health and personal care stores and personal studios, I would just like to request, I don't know what all that entails, but in keeping with the neighborhood and the children and the school systems and all, that we certainly nail salons would be fine, but I wouldn't like to see a, a place like the person mentioned earlier, the Love Stuff Place, or possibly a massage parlor, maybe, wouldn't be really in keeping with the neighborhood, but. So, will these uses specific come back to the city council to vote on? Or to this group to vote on to the city council as to, or just anything under health and personal care studios, stores could go through without anybody having any oversight on it?
Unless there are certain uses that are removed from this list tonight, the rest of them are.
But, I mean, they have, I mean, you could, you could have a nail salon, which would be under personal care stores, I would think, would be permitted, but then there's other things you could call personal care that maybe not be appropriate, that's just my question. So, it's just something to think about in these, in the categories, thank you.
Thank you, please sign in. Anyone else?
My name's Seth Humphrey, I live at sixteen seventy-three Stone Point Drive. Looking at this list, there's a few that are general, that, you said I can't ask questions, but retail is very broad. If we're scratching off the list, general merchandise stores, that seems like the same thing as retail to me. I don't want a vape shop, I don't want a brew pub, I don't want a nail salon, actually. Any, any vice, be considered a vice like that, I don't want across the street from my kids. And I don't know where those things fall, I don't want a marijuana store. And just a general statement, I don't have anything against the developer. I was the first person in line this morning for Aldi's opening, let's see, he's sporting the jacket with Aldi. I was there before six AM, stayed there in the cold. We shop where we want to shop, and we don't where we don't, and we don't want to shop across the street. Thanks.
Emily Antoniak, sixteen seventy-nine Poplar Ridge Drive. I guess this is my final request, as you guys are narrowing down the list of what comes in and what you guys decide we don't need in our neighborhoods. If we could hopefully just keep in mind that this is directly, like all of our kids, that if we ever do get walkability to school or when they become old enough to walk out of their front yard and to go see their friend across the street, it would be great if you could find a way to remove the possibility of all of our children walking right by the vape shops, right by all of the things that they could very easily stop in without the parent knowledge of the four neighborhoods right around. And I get, bringing businesses to neighborhoods is great, but if the, the point of the commission is to think about the safety and the health and the well-being of the people that live in that neighborhood, it is extremely heavy with little children. I would love it if you could find a way to, if we are worried about dogs outside in kennels, maybe we could think also about how can we find the wording to at least keep the vape shops away from our kids right next to the K through two school, who will be walking through the woods from their backyards to the school, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it's one thing to talk about all the things that need to be developed. Our, we came from an audience of, we don't want the place at all, period, we don't want it. Now, the vote is already going in that way. And I'm going to say something, and I please take it from our perspective. I didn't hear any discussion on the amount of money our homes will be depreciated because of this. I didn't hear any discussion on the amount of years that that building, that field will be torn over and everything dug on, and the trees cut down and all these homes that are twenty and thirty feet behind, filled with dirt for over two years to get that thing up and running. I didn't hear how many we wanted if that, if it somehow was voted what we wanted. I mean, I appreciate what you want, but it's in front of our store. If we, if we haven't heard anything from the developer, we almost feel the same way now, we don't feel anything as well. We could sign an affidavit, and maybe that's what we'll do, to get a couple of thousand people to sign a petition saying, we don't want that. And I don't know how that finally goes into it, but we don't want that, the green space was wonderful. Can you imagine living anywhere within a mile of that? I have a picture of showing you construction of what it takes for a strip mall, and it's horrible, we're, these homes right across the way, they're thirty feet behind. It's a horrible situation to even have that building there. I don't know, but I know you guys got to do your job, but you need to listen to us, is what we want. The word, the bottom issue was not what issues, what buildings we would allow. The issue was, we don't want that building, that development in our area. Again, look around and there is not one strip mall that was built after four sides of it was community and residence, not one. And so we're going against something unbelievable where everybody is already there. Now, there's some places where a place with a strip mall was built and then people built in there, okay, they knew what they were getting. We thought we knew what we were getting, we were going to live in the country. And we weren't going to have a developer develop what he wanted or what a board wanted. We didn't want it at all. Sorry.
You're welcome to do that afterwards if you like.
Hi, I'm Dr. Amanda Taylor, I live at twenty seven thirty Partridge Lane, I'm in the Pear Tree Farms Development, it's just off of Farmville Road after you turn off of Donahue. I agree with what's been said, I'd like y'all to consider revisiting that fence issue, although there is a large wooded area between the school and this. What restaurants and dumpsters attract is coyotes that run through wooded areas, and if you do not put a fence between the wooded area and that parking lot, that's going to be there, coyotes running right next to the school. And the other thing I'd like to say before I get into these details is, there has not been a single constituent or citizen tonight that has been in favor of this. The only person that is, is the representative of the developer. Now, regarding what's in here, we're about to build a high school on Drake, on Donahue, excuse me. So we're going to have high schoolers walking past this development. And for that reason, I think we need to not have a brew pub, that's a fancy word for a bar that serves food. I don't need somebody who went to an early happy hour at three PM peeling out of that parking lot right next to our school zones. I do not think that is safe, I agree, we should not have a vape shop. I agree, we should not have a CBD shop or cannabis, once it is legalized in this state, being sold in this retail center, because they will find a way to get it, even if they're underage, and we are increasing their access to it, we do not need it. We do not need a sixty thousand foot, square foot retail grocery store here. We all have three grocery stores within nine minutes of us, and we're all fine driving to them. We don't need one right there. So I ask that the committee please consider removing those from this section, thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward? Anyone else like to come forward?
Howdy. Jason Johnson. I live at fourteen thirty-one Crescent Boulevard. It is one, a development of said developer that we're talking about. I just sort of wanted to say, I've got my three-year-old daughter here and my wife. We've got a, a new boy on the way in February, so we're right around the corner from this. What Mr. Davis brought up before. You know, y'all are trying to do something in the best interest of the community around there. So what I took from that is none of y'all live where this is going on. So just for a moment before y'all, you know, decide on what can and cannot go there, think about if these are y'all's backyards that are backing up these businesses. Ms. Stevens, I know you said something about a fast food place that doesn't use speakers anymore. I've never heard of that before, that, you know, that's, that's still there. So just think about y'all's backyards backing up to this. If you have a three-year-old daughter or a boy on the way, what should be there? Auburn's thriving. We don't, you know, these can go elsewhere, but just think in the best interest of us and think about it if y'all were there. And I, you know, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Angela Hill again, two zero six one Felicity Lane. My backyard again will be this backyard, so for conditional use, I would like for you to deny gymnasium, mostly because of the noise and probably the size of the building that a gymnasium would be in my backyard. ATMs with drive-throughs, fast food restaurants, restaurants, gas and service stations. I also do not want to see the back of a tire store in my backyard. So again, with any kind of restaurant or food services, there's dumpsters. As on the plans, there's dumpsters. Already have a feral cat problem and mice problem, so that would just be making the whole problem worse. So I'd like for you to deny those. Brew pub also because of late night hours and the clientele. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward? Okay, seeing no one will close the public hearing, I do have a question. Vape, mari- marijuana, whatever, oh, whatever you want to call it. And a Love Stuff-esque store being that close to schools, is there a, a distance that?
So I mean, we, so, so you can't put buffers on things like that. Normally those things are state laws kind of deals. But, but yeah, I, I guess we'd, we'd have to look and see if there, there were any existing buffers. I guess I would apply to that, but I, yeah, so, so I guess from a buffer standpoint, that, that's the answer. I, I guess from a use standpoint and restricting it, those things are things that could be, if, those things could be explicitly conditioned if you wanted. I, I guess it would just have to be if they stood or not kind of in the approval. But I guess, you have anything to add to?
I'm not aware of any buffer zone for those types of uses to a school. However, if there are existing state laws, then those state laws would prohibit those uses from being there, not anything that this body could or, or would do.
So.
It doesn't matter if, if it falls within the uses that are approved. If there is a restriction on, let's say, a vape shop being within a certain distance of a school and a vape shop intends to open in this development within that distance, the state law would act to prohibit that. The, the, this board nor the city council would have to act to prohibit that.
So that we could not put a specific condition?
I'm saying it's not necessary. Because the state law would already prohibit it.
But if it doesn't exist, what am I asking?
Wait a second, wait, wait a second. So, so the issue with buffers and kind of this, this has been tried. This has gone to court and this has been fought. So the issue with buffers, as you can imagine, this is one of the things. So I used to live in Minnesota, very, very restrictive liquor laws that did have, that did have state law buffers around them. So we ended up with dry counties, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the things, can't be near group homes, can't be near churches, can't be near daycares, can't be near schools, yada, yada, yada. Like everybody's probably, I'm sure aware of, just kind of their commutes into, into town. There are schools on every single arterial. There are schools on every single one. I'm sure all of you get caught in trying to go to work. When you start putting, you know, let's say, I think the one in Minnesota, you know, is about five hundred-foot buffers, kind of like a, you know, general diameter. Then you put that on a map of where all those are and you put that on the city limits. All of a sudden, that can't exist in the city anymore. And so then like what happens, I guess, like, you know, that's the intent. But then kind of from the other side of that, then that's pretty much a backdoor ban on it. And so then that has gone to court, that has been fought of like, this is really just a way around this to ban something through this use of buffers. And so I, I, I would caution y'all, and I guess like that is something that like you could try from like a conditional use standpoint, but that is something that we would need to vet the validity of just from like implementing buffers on certain uses kind of tied to other uses.
Well, I guess the question should be, what is a, what type of a?
Retail.
Yeah, is, are they all considered retail?
I would, I, I think all three of them would be.
So, so, so I would say kind of instead of trying to, you know, like name out and request kind of what each, what all can fall under general retail, we're back to exclusively naming what you don't want. And so if you, so like I say, you're kind of, you're within your purview to restrict uses entirely and just say, no, like, like we don't want that or force that to come back kind of deal. But I think if you're, if you're going to plant the flag on general retail or try to put a buffer on something to prevent it, I would say explicitly prevent it outright, just so you don't want it.
Well, that, that's what I'm asking, you know. Does the city not have, I mean, because where I've lived, there was always rules and regulations of where you could put a vape shop or a, or a Love Stuff. I mean, does the city of Auburn not have regulations on where Love Stuff can go?
If it falls within the retail definition, then no. And it should. The, the answer to that question is no.
Yeah, because, because I, so, and I, so, we, so, so you'd be running kind of into the fine line of there's certain, like, like adult stores and things like that, that like adult venues, clubs, private clubs, nightclubs, tho- those things. Now, those things are explicitly kind of outlined. And once again, as Supreme Court cannot be just flatly banned in a city. It can be sectioned off to somewhere. And so for us, that's kind of in the, in the industrial areas and that's not uncommon. That happens literally all, all, all over the country. But it's a, it's a way to not allow those. But I think kind of the things that where things are slippery with the general retail, I think you'd have to take an approach on a conditional use standpoint and just deny it outright. And I, and I guess so, in the, so a conditional use does empower you to explicitly name something that you do not want. And I guess this is kind of back to what we were getting at, that the most, this is most restrictive. The PDD is a contract and in that contract you can put that this is not explicitly allowed. And that's different from kind of the property rights that somebody would be entitled to, to just say, no, I'm going to build this. I have the option to build this and you cannot stop me. I've met these standards, give me my permit. In this, you have the option to explicitly name them, like you did other ones, if you do not want it. So the vape shop, cannabis, brew pub, if you want to take those out here, you could do that here too. But I would say, instead of fighting the amorphous general retail, identify the explicit ones you do not want and list them.
At this point though, that is, we'd have to go to city council.
Yeah, and I guess kind of, so, so, so I guess kind of on, on that, this, this would be something for the city council to chew on is, here are the things that we didn't want in it, here are the things that we got significant public comment about that they have real concerns about, and then they can also make that decision, so.
If I can interject, and very quickly looking at Alabama state law, it does prohibit vape shops within a thousand feet of a school, church, youth center, daycare, public library, playground.
Perfect. What about the other two?
What about the adult store?
There, no.
It's retail.
We only have a restriction that we can find as to the vape shop.
Well, good.
But that doesn't take any action for us on our part.
No.
No, the state, the state law already prohibits it.
State law overrules or wins. Okay, just, the public hearing is still open. Sorry. It is. We look, it was four hundred and thirty-one feet from the east and the school is still within a thousand feet of the development. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. I apologize for that.
Back to pulling?
We are back, but just remember, we've already done this in PDD. So if you change anything on this, you will need to go to city council.
Do we have to make it part of the motion?
Yes.
To remove all that, the same things?
Yeah, so, so, so I guess just, just for clarity, so if you could go to the actual site plan. All right, so, so pretty much everything on the top would, it's kind of falls in that thousand feet. So I, I'm pretty confident in saying kind of the only place it could go would be that furthest bottom west corner. And even that I think would be dicey, because I mean, we're talking property line to property line. So I, I would interpret it as that establishments, like let's say if it's subdivided or even if it was just kind of from the building, I'd say probably from the building all the way to the property line is probably how, how I would interpret that. Pretty much the entirety of that site. According to the GIS data, I guess once we got a survey, you know, we'd have to, we examined it even further. Mm-hmm, yeah, it's all within the thousand for, for a vape shop for all the curious parties in the audience.
Thank you.
And so, and so then, so then just kind of on compounding, would you, if you need to go back, I think the, I think the recommendation of something of further restrictions would suffice. And I think that's something that council would probably be aware of and include in their discussions and deliberation around this project as well. So I think if you just wanted to mention it on this condition, that'd be fine too.
Any further discussion or motion? Please be specific. Welcome back.
Make a motion, okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the conditional use. See you two oh two four dash oh four zero with exempting general merchandise, all drive-throughs, vet with outdoor kennel and mobile food court. Now, how do I say the other? How do I say, and the council should look at vape shops, Love Stuff?
I mean, so, 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 so you can just say further exempting, I, I, I guess. Like, like I said, I mean, there's the public hearing, I mean, our council does, does a due diligence. I mean, like, I, I think something like this, they're definitely going to be aware of the discussion.
I'm sure they're going to.
I, I think it's, it, they know.
So with further exemptions as discussed in the public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, with further exemptions as discussed in the public hearing?
There we go, there we go, that, that'll work for me.
Love it. Does it need to be restated?
Oh, please.
I think we're good. I think we're good. I, I think we're good.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, motion carries. Um, I would like to request a recess.
Oh, Nick, can y'all just pass the consent agenda?
It wasn't approved, so sure. My recess wasn't approved, so.
I, I move to approve the consent agenda.
And minutes?
And minutes from the meetings, uh, pack and, uh, council, uh, commission meetings of December of two thousand twenty-four.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we're on new business. May I please have a recess?
Yes.
Declare time, please.
Yeah.
Minutes.
All right, yeah, so what, what time is it? All right, yeah, so we'll resume at eight oh eight.
Eight oh eight.
Um, it's eight oh eight. Go ahead and get started on new business.
In a point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to recuse myself from the discussion and abstain from the vote.
Okay.
For this next item.
Okay, noted.
All right. For this item, the applicant is requesting a waiver to Article four, Section E of the Auburn subdivision regulations to allow a single family detached lot to be subdivided off a private access drive. Uh, the property is located at ten forty-eight Zeller's Avenue in the, uh, neighborhood conservation NC eight district. Now, private access drives are a new term that was coined when the, uh, revision update to the subdivision regulations were approved by this body in September of, uh, this past year. And in the staff report, it lists out where private access drives, um, are, I guess, adequate and where they can be implemented. And this request would meet all of that except for the fact that it serves two single family lots. Now, this is a, um, flag resembling lot. It's not a flag lot because it does have sixty with affronted at Zeller's Avenue. So it's not a flag lot, but it does have majority of its, uh, buildable area in the rear. And so, uh, this is a proposed subdivision where one portion, I'm sorry, one lot would have the sixty feet along Zeller's Avenue, while the second lot will be, um, basically landlocked and gain access through a private access drive. Now, this is similar to ones you would see for townhomes or MUDs. Uh, this is a case where they're asking it for a, uh, single family residence. There's existing residents on the say here. I will say that the existing lot configuration of it being a, again, flag looking lot is a product of previous subdivisions that have happened as early as June of twenty twenty-three. So, um, I believe these three lots here are a part of the professional subdivision as well. And so it's been subdivided in twenty twenty-one of March, August twenty twenty-one, and again of June of twenty twenty-three. And this is the latest, uh, proposed addition. Now, there's been some history going back and forth also with, uh, proposed ways to increase the density of this area. Uh, this lot is approximately one point oh eight acres. And in the NC eight zone, uh, it allows for up to five dwellings per acre if you do the math. And so, uh, due to lots configuration, it's tough to fit, um, more lots in that area just because of the bottleneck at the road width. And so there was, uh, an potential to do flag lots, but it can't be done in NC zones. Uh, there is a request to rezone the property, but there was hesitancy due to just general rezoning of the northwest Auburn area. And so this is the latest avenue that the, uh, property or an applicant is seeking. And so of all the options, uh, staff, I guess, would prefer this one, uh, even though it is an exception to a brand new rule that was, um, implemented. Generally, we don't want single family homes and we explicit them in the list, uh, for private access drives because we didn't want, or there's sentiment in the community that, uh, there should not be large scale gated developments. And so, uh, we recommend approval with the condition that this development will not be gated along Zeller's. Happy to answer any specific questions.
Yes, I have one. Who, um, which, which owner would maintain that private drive?
So it would be a homeowners association, uh, type deal.
Between two.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Want to show me where that, uh, other home goes again?
Yes, so, um, this is the, the proposal that was submitted.
Yeah.
Um, now, the lot configuration may change, but the premise is this is the existing building. Uh, there would be a secondary house on this lot on this side.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
And they have not, this, they have to get before they can subdivide? It's not subdivided right now?
Correct, they cannot subdivide without, without this because it'd be creating landlocked parcel.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, this waiver does require a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak on this. I can't see anymore. Apologize. Um, anybody who wants to speak. Seeing no one, I will, um, close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, if you have any questions, comments, or motions. Please be aware of the gate.
Well, I'll, I'll move to approve case WZ twenty twenty-four dash zero two zero with the condition that the private access drive shall not be gated along Zeller Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay, we have an annexation.
All right, so for this request, the applicant is requesting annexation of approximately four point four acres into the city limits. The, uh, property is located at twenty twenty South College Street. It is nearby adjacent city property in the SCCD zone, South College Corridor District and, uh, Comprehensive Development District. An existing, uh, this is at a, the optimal boundary, you can see it's, uh, well within the optimal boundary and it has a high priority for annexation. Uh, the applicant has provided a historical site plan of the site. Uh, the site has changed since then. Uh, existing storage facility was recently constructed and, uh, given CO, I believe, in August of this past year. And, uh, with that, if it's annexed, the automatic designation is rural. So it'll come in, the self storage facility will come in to the city under the rural zoning designation. It will be classified as a nonconformity and subject to Article seven of the rules and regulations regarding nonconformities. Additional information of note, there is a billboard on the site and there is currently a agreement in the works between the property owner and the city, uh, regarding the billboard and it's, I guess, time that'll be on the site. The expiration for the lease is until twenty twenty-eight and there's, uh, there's an agreement to remove the billboard after that time. Given the, again, um, nonconformity relating to billboards. So with that, staff recommends approval with the condition of that, uh, can, uh, agreement being in place regarding the billboard, being instrumented through an agreement with the city and the property owner. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, so, um, the property is proposed to be annexed as rural. How, however, it's, it's within the SCCD.
Uh, so when a property is annexed into the city, the automatic designation is rural. And there is not a tied, uh, rezoning to this, to this request.
Is there a reason why?
So it's going to stay rural up until, yes, up until there's a quest to rezone. Uh, the most, I would say the most applicable zoning would be SCCD.
Why did they not go toward that step, second step to?
Yeah, I'm not sure why. Um, given that self storage facilities are not permitted by right in any zone, it wouldn't necessarily help them if they're SCCD, given that the entire site is already a self storage facility. So if they were ever to expand the facility, they'd have to rezone to somewhere where it is conditional and then seek a conditional use to expand the, the use substantially.
Yeah, and I guess kind of the, the function of that is it coming in under a nonconformity clause allows it to operate, which is kind of all their intent is. But kind of like Connor mentioned, nonconformities cannot expand. And so that, that's why we then have to rezone and then, you know, find something, find something appropriate. But, uh, the existing as a nonconformity does not hinder their current operation, so there's no intent. And it was also not a part of the resolution, uh, attached to the annexation. The, the resolution just required that they annex since they had city water once they got, um, once they got their CO. Uh, so that's what they're fulfilling right now. That was not a part of the agreement.
I have a question. Um, i- if you, if you go back to the first slide on that, no, yeah, that one. Are these two property owners, the one up there on the corner, the one still out of the county up there on the corner?
The white.
Yep, the white. Yeah, that one right here. You had it over, yeah, the one up on the corner of South College and Lake.
Still looks like it should be part of our property that we're looking at.
Yeah.
That in the county.
I'm trying to make sure what you mean.
Okay.
It's not being annexed.
It's not being annexed.
Is it in the county is what she's asking?
Yeah, is it in the county?
All the white that is in the, is in the county currently.
All the white is?
Yes.
Okay. Is that two separate lots?
Yes, well, there, this, this property right here is, is one lot of record. And so just the one lot of record is being considered for.
Why is the other part, is the other part owned by the same owner?
No. It's a separate, separate parcel.
Any other questions? Okay, annexations do not require public hearing, so commissioners?
Move to approve case AX twenty twenty-four zero three zero with, uh, the conditions. Recommend to the city council for approval. With, and that the, the conditions being the billboard on site shall not be renewed after the current lease expires.
And shall not be rebuilt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Wait a second, wait a second.
I didn't know if he was doing Green River or?
Yeah, 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 have we?
We're just postponing, man.
Yeah, 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 I don't think we made a motion to postpone this at date certain yet. Yeah, yeah, there we go, there we go, all right.
Um, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to tell us to do this. Um, Green River has requested postponement until date certain of?
Yeah, the February meeting, so.
February thirteenth.
So it would be, uh, yeah, yeah, February thirteenth, so yeah, they start on February thirteenth.
Okay, so the request is for postponement to a date certain of February the thirteenth. Uh, if y'all would please make a motion.
Motion to postpone case RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-one to date certain of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, I apologize, welcome back.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Well, this is a request for a conditional use approval for a road service use, which is a automotive repair facility located at two eight six zero East University Drive. The property is in comprehensive development district with a PDD overlay. In the north, south, and east, as you can see, it's mostly CDD with PDD overlay. Uh, and in the west, uh, you have a neighborhood shopping center and a bank. The subject property is currently vacant and is a part of the shops at Caddy Creek, uh, PDDO. In two thousand and eight, the city council approved a conditional use for the entire uh, shops at Caddy Creek PDD overlay to construct various uses, including the road service uses, which is the current. The current proposal is that of a five five six zero square feet building and, you can see the building. It just involves a part of the whole site that we are showing here. A logical location of an automotive repair facility is along a material road, which is true in this case. Also, an automotive repair facility is an important road service use and currently there are no such repair facilities in the vicinity. Thus, the staff recommends approval of the request. However, currently, the property is a six point nine seven acres. So this whole area is one lot of record and the proposal is just on, on this small area. So there needs to be an admin plat request for the subdivision of this property that will divide it into two lots, one the northern half and one the southern half, if they want to use just this southern part of the property, uh, for this development. So all the cal-
Did you say it was going to be admin?
Yes, that can be an admin plat subdividing into two or three plants i- if it's not more. So also, the conditions that have been developed right now are based on the property considering it as one lot of record. So the ISR, FAR, everything has been calculated based on that. So once that admin plat is done, the ISR, FAR, those things will change, the buffer requirements will change. So those things needs to be recalculated once the admin plat is done. So, yeah, as long as that is done, uh, the staff recommends approval. And also the proposed exhibit, it shows parking in some of the ingress egress easements. So that needs to be, uh, rechecked and, uh, like the admin plat needs to work through that as well. But, uh, considering everything else is done in the right way, uh, we recommend approval.
So, so does this, um, the way this is, the site plan is presented, even when you do the admin separation, does it still meet the ISR requirements? Cause it's much more, you know, uh.
Right, so I haven't calculated it based on, uh, if this is just a lot, because I don't know how much area they would be requesting when they, because here they're not showing, uh, like, yeah, so I don't know what this exact area is or.
Cause they're allowed a lot more with this big property.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and so, and so, and so it's kind of, this is, this is, uh, kind of the far end of the spectrum of kind of how this is done. This is kind of to our surprise as well, not, not this specific project. When we redid the subdivision regs and we talked with a lot of the design professionals and kind of how their projects go and citing and all that stuff, they're normally not operating with the most accurate data at the outset. So when they come to us, I mean, a lot of these things are kind of based on, um, you know, educated guesses from the city's GIS are kind of like an old survey or something, but they're not operating with like an accurate survey of what they're doing yet. Um, and so oftentimes, like, they're all, they're, they're operating with that educated guess. This, they don't even have an admin plat or relevant survey that then would tie them to this. Um, so, so even if, like, they did submit that, oftentimes, like, one of the things that happens in DRT is once they get the survey, things get tweaked, they find out things need to move, they don't have as much space as they initially thought. And so then some of those granular details get shifted.
When the ISR is really kind of compared, what, what's allowed and what, what are they doing?
Yep, 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 so, and so, and so I guess kind of not something that's like a deal breaker, that's why that's a comment and not a condition, but definitely something just to be aware of. And that was something that we mutually wanted y'all to be aware of in city council, but also the applicant. I mean, we kind of told them at the outset that, hey, like this, you need to get an admin plat, kind of get this cleaned up. Um, that way we can kind of know from, uh, uh, what boundaries, distances, et cetera, that we're really working with.
Down the road, you don't want to be nonconforming.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And, and also, it also just kind of ties up, it ties, uh, the conditional use to the entire thing as well, so.
Yeah, based on the preliminary calculation, I can tell you that, uh, it would be, it would be within the ISR and FAR requirement. So, yeah, it shouldn't be a nonconformity.
So entrance into this will be from the shopping center?
From, yeah, from.
Uh, parking lot, is it, is it going to be the same entrance, um, in front of, I, I guess Troy Bank and Trust is up there?
Beside it is the Troy Bank, yeah.
Well, this does require a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now, if anyone would like to come speak on this item. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners? Questions, comments, motions?
Make a motion to approve case CU two oh two four dash zero five oh forward to the city council with recommendation for approval.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This can't be the last one, is it?
No, it's not.
Last, kind of last items for tonight.
Oh, we still have more business.
We still have more business.
All right.
Last new business items.
All right.
Oh, so this request is for preliminary plat approval to dedicate right of way and drainage and utility easements to the city of Auburn. The right of way is also known as Sarah Lane, which is east of Miracle Road and just north of North Donahue Drive. Uh, it's in the rural zoning district as well, if that's. All right, right here, you can see the right of way in the yellow and the, in the blue, the drainage and utility easements that I referred to earlier. Um, it is worth mentioning that this plat was approved by the planning commission in September of two thousand and twenty-one, but it's come back around as a preliminary and final plat submittal, um, to correct some items that were contained in that previous plat. Um, so with that being said, staff is approving, um, these, this request for preliminary plat approval.
Any questions? This does require a public hearing as a preliminary plat. I will open that now. If anyone would like to speak on this agenda item. No one. Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve PP two oh two four dash oh five four.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our last business item.
This last item is a request for a final plat approval of the same plat that you just saw in the preliminary stage, uh, to dedicate right of way specifically Sarah Lane and the drainage utility easements to the city.
Thank you.
We recommend approval.
Thank you. Final plat does not require a public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve FP dash two oh two four dash zero two eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank, we have, um, a correction that needs to be made to our approval of conditional uses to the Donna Crossing. Um, we need to restate that motion.
From a procedural perspective, we'll need a motion to reconsider, which will have to be seconded and approved. And then when we get back to the motion, there'll be, need to be a motion to amend with a restated motion to approve, seconded and approved.
All right, and so the language needs to be, um, so there's the four that were exempted. And then the uses to be. Oh, man, so, and so then, uh, uses to be, uses to be further considered for exemption, uh, for, for exclusion. Um, the ones mentioned in the public hearing, because I, I, I guess, even though the spirit was that they're to, they're to be considered, the motion itself was that they would be excluded, so.
So we need a motion?
I can't say. I can't say love stuff. Do I need to adult?
No, what I, I think, first of all, we need a motion to reconsider.
We need a motion to reconsider, please.
A move to reconsider.
CU twenty twenty-four zero four zero.
Second.
Got that, uh, all right, cool, Oscar seconded, there we go.
I have a motion and a second to reconsider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next.
Okay, I think the, the motion can be to exclude those four specifically excluded, previously excluded uses under the PDD consideration and then a request for the council to consider uh, other uses that were brought up during the public hearing.
Request.
It can be that general.
Okay.
It does not have to be very specific.
Counsel?
But it would be a, a request only.
Do request. Uses brought up during public hearing. You can do it. I'm ready. I support you.
And this is stated as a motion to amend.
Move to have a motion to amend CU two oh two four dash zero four zero to approve with the exception of general merchandise, all drive-throughs, a vet with outside kennels, and a mobile food court. And to request that the council consider other uses brought during public comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Do we have anything else to do?
Y'all need to elect officers.
Election of officers.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move in the interest of, don't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. That we, uh, keep the same slate of officers for twenty twenty-five.
So for everybody, that is Nanetta's chair, Wisdom's vice chair, uh, Commissioner Camp as secretary.
I have a motion and a second, keep officers in place for twenty twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wisdom was, he gets an email that he is.
All right, yeah, just kind of from a, um, announcement standpoint, see y'all next week. Hopefully we don't have to have one this long again.
At three PM.
Three o'clock Tuesday.
Yeah, three PM on Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where?
Uh, JCB, so just kind of, um, we've already had our work sessions on.
All right.
Motion to.
Second.
All in favor?